Being led by Ray Otten. Our second regular meeting of the village board of trustees in the village of Boston Spa on this August 28, 2023. We are going to start by completing our public hearing on the 2023 Village of Boston Spa Comprehensive Plan update. First, I would like to ask the clerk if we had received any correspondence related to the comprehensive plan. Okay, no correspondence. Is there anybody that would like to give comment at this time? John Crombie Rice is go right ahead. And make sure you turn on that microphone. You can even turn that podium a little bit. I think you're a little too square to us. Yeah, it's kind of like that. Yeah, there you go. Perfect. Right there. You got it. Thank you very much. Well, that one makes you your ideas, too. Look good. Go for it.
Okay.
And name and address.
John Crombie, 1323 Street. Here in Boston Spa. At the last public hearing, Matt Erkely came in by Zoom and indicated there was a phrase that he would like to have deleted. And I went and looked at that spoken by Matt about this and turns out this was something that has been misinterpreted. And that particular phrase that Matt was looking at was really never discussed by the board. And actually, when you look at its import, if it were ever to happen, it would be well beyond the 10 to 15 years from now. It would not be a part of the, within the purview of a master plan at this point in time. And that, that particular phrase he was talking about is under goals housing number nine. There is a sentence, recognize opportunities to be responsive to potential population increase from outside the region due to climate migration from coastal areas, et cetera, provide infrastructure and services to accommodate migrants from climate damage locations. That last phrase, due to climate migration from coastal areas, should be deleted. What we were really talking about was clarified in our March minutes. But it was our last meeting, so the minutes were never approved. And how, according from the minutes, the misinterpretation of climate refugee in comments suggests the term should be changed. Perhaps climate induced relocation to describe people of affluence. Do not wish to live with climate uncertainties. It will bring their work with them to the northeast. Among the areas upstate, Charlotte County will be the most attractive. It is best positioned, a best positioned county for growth in the state. If the job market increases, that is, for example, expansion of gold boundaries, even more people will be attracted to the area. That's what we were actually talking about. It wasn't migrants in the normal sense of the word. We decided ourselves that's not a proper term.
Out of curiosity, let's read back the sentence to where you would stop it, just so we have an actually, I try to type it down in real time with you.
The second sentence in short term number nine. Recognize opportunities to be responsive to potential population increase from outside the region.
To be responsive to, sorry. To be responsive to?
Potential population increase from outside the region.
And that's it?
That's it. The rest of it, the rest of that sentence really should be deleted because we never discussed that. It's really not even part of the purview of the national.
Understood. Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Sorry, my voice is a little bit off tonight. Anybody else with any public comment inside the room? Seeing none, anybody on Zoom? And seeing none, can I get a motion to close the public hearing and August 28th at 7:04 PM? Trustee Fundensa, trustee Kormos, discussion, roll call though, please.
Trustee Baskin?
Aye.
Trustee Raymond?
Aye.
Trustee Fundensa?
Aye.
Trustee Kormos?
Aye.
Mayor Rossi?
Yes. So we have now closed that public hearing. There'll be more in this, obviously later in this meeting. Okay, I, can I get a motion that the minutes of the August 14, 2023 meeting be approved?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fundensa?
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Your announcements, earlier today, Chief Bush and I were on a phone call or a Zoom call, excuse me, with Mayor Kim, Chief McIntosh, Jason Tito, who's the deputy commissioner of public safety in Saratoga Springs, Matt Beach and one or two others that I'm forgetting right now, I believe Deputy Mayor as well, were in the call. And the discussion again was the events of, I believe it was August 5th, Saturday, protests that occurred and just how to better carry information from one municipality to the other, especially if something fails with their normal dispatch system. We did arrive at some ideas and we're going to also, Matt Beach has helped speak a little bit more to the county on this to see what we can do to maximize information communication from here on out. As we all agreed in our call, we were lucky that it was a somewhat nonviolent approach taken that day. It could have been a lot worse. It's just, it is what it is in that respect. And so let's learn from this one. So that next time somebody comes through, we have the information sharing we need to make sure we're not flat put in a situation like that. Or that Saratoga would be flat footed if we didn't share information with them. It could have reversed and it was a very good discussion with everybody. So thanks to Mayor Kim and his group for that. Want to thank our fire department today. First, obviously their loss, Ken Woolley Jr. Passed away last week succumbing to cancer. He lived a lot longer than people thought he would. He was a fighter for sure. And Ken passed away last week. You know, was at his wake last night. And if you ever have or never have seen our fire department at a fallen member's wake, it's something to behold always and chokes me up every time I see it, to be honest with you. But today, after the funeral, they go to eat lunch at their respective houses and lo and behold, there's a residential fire in Finley Road up in the town of Ballston. Because they were among the first on the scene, thanks to their location and placement at that point in time, the garage is unrecognizable, the breezeway has some fire damage to it, the house only has smoke damage and nothing else. It was an amazing save by them. And so in true spirit of Ken Woolley, our firefighters sprung to the scene and got that one taken care of. A lot of departments joined them, obviously, but timing mattered in that situation. And thank you to our fire department for their work despite all the emotion that they've been through over the last few days especially. That's it for me for now. Let's go to liaison reports. We'll start with Liz.
Don't have much, just the
Over the microphone though?
I, Ben is going to handle Park and Tree because I was in the revenue committee meeting and then joined the Park and Tree meeting a little bit late. But the only thing really I have is that at Saturday, September night, there'll be a book signing at the library at 1:00 PM. And it is Matt Witten, who is the author of Killer Story. So if you want to go to that, otherwise I don't have anything else.
Very good.
Just a number of things. First off, I want to, I'm going to be talking about the BSBPA, the Business Association. But I want to first thank them for their involvement and assistance with Family Fun Day. They came out really big for this community and also the businesses in particular. Lot of generosity from restaurants, individual retailers. It was really felt by the community and they really liked seeing that, you know, so thank you. Incredibly thankful. Their own sort of things to report, just a reminder about ice from social. Let's hope there's no rain. I don't know. I haven't looked at the weather yet, but it's this Thursday, 6:00 PM to 7:30. I hope everybody can attend. It's at the Iron Spring Park. Continuation of Farmer's Market. If you haven't been there, there's more produce and more items to sell. Again, Saturday is nine to three, nine to one, excuse me, and then Thursday is three to six. Ribbon cuttings, these are important. This is just a great way to celebrate what's happening in our community. September 2nd at noon, is having a ribbon cutting. Nightwork bread, I don't have a time, but September 10th, so just pencil that in. And then Bottle Museum, and maybe Ellie can tell more about that. October 6, 4:30. Car show, just a reminder, that's coming up in October. There's volunteers needed. Email Dana at ballston.org. And yeah, just they're working really, they're working harder this year for the Shop Small Saturday and the Holiday Parade. Dana put his, basically put it in parentheses that they're going to try to make it really big. So I don't know what that means, but that's exciting. I love their energy right now. I'm just thanking them for what they're doing.
Just by the way, zero percent chances of rain on Thursday.
Famous last words. If I can for one second, just something I forgot to do and this is kind of the day I've been having. Must bring board of, we've already started with and thank everybody that had a lot to do with Family Fun Day. It was an incredible experience. We have some of the people in the house, Mary Price Bush, great job, Gina Ray, I know Yana Stanko, Lori O'Connor and Rory as well. I'm sure Donna Dardaris, how can I forget Donna? Andy Ryder, our task force has been tremendous. You obviously know the highs and lows of what they went through to get us to that point. Jennifer Moskowitz, also our village administrator, was very helpful in making sure that things stayed on course. So it took, it took a village, it honestly did. Buried that proved that she has design skills that maybe she should have taken up as a profession, the way that your stuff was looking there. And so thank you to her for providing that. But it really did take a village to get things to be as great as they were. I think the crowd exceeded last year, especially when we looked at what's out in the street. Interior O'Connor, yeah, her over there. I know her. I know her.
Don't forgive my wife.
Your wife? Yes. Well, nonetheless, you could see it was a huge undertaking and an important one. Thanks Christine and Tommy, we're there. For Friends of the Library, hope that you got a good day there. A great day. Thank you very much. And for everybody that showed up there with booths and tables and everything. That's what really made it special, especially getting people off of Front Street from businesses that normally wouldn't participate on Front Street, onto Front Street to show their wares and, you know, put their name out there and show that they support this community as much as anybody. Not that there was much doubt about that, but it's just a reminder that we have a much bigger business community than we sometimes realize here in the village. So thanks to everybody for that. Sorry to steal your thunder there and your time there, Sean. Go right ahead on EPW.
So spoke with Jeff today. And the word of the day is paving, paving, paving. So he is working on the streets. He probably wrapped the ones he's working on in the next two days and then start the process again. We have eight more streets on the list. And he's also doing odds and ends and the other miscellaneous work in Kelly Park as well. In between getting prepped for paving. The next eight streets that we're looking at are Court Street, Lower Ballston Ave, Rosewood Court, Trumble Ave, Liberty Street, East North Street, John Street and Park Street. And probably prior to that, they're going to probably have to have some infrastructure work in a catch basins installed or manholes replaced and installed. So just be, be mindful, there's probably going to be some more dug up roads in the, in the upcoming weeks. His schedule is saying that this probably will be late September, early October before he's wrapping things up. So if he's lucky. Weather.
One thing I did talk to Chief Bush about whether or not people could park on Route 50 during the paving on Monday night, Tuesday night. When you stretch into Wednesday night because of weather on Wednesday. He said that yes, by all means, go ahead and park on Route 50 in legal spaces. If somehow by accident a ticket ends up happening, it will get squashed. But there's very low likelihood in the first place that that will happen. Just please remember to park in the right direction, going with the flow of the lane of traffic, because I have seen that on Route 50 and I'm not sure how they even got there that way, but I don't care to know or see it for myself. So please park along the street with traffic in that same direction. Ben?
The park and treatment on August 15th and one of the big things they're, they're working on and it's a motion on this agenda is a picnic table using some funds that have already been allocated or a picnic table with benches around it for Whizwald Park. So that will be a great addition. And they also spent time reviewing the ASCC contract. They were talking about that they had recently put in the grant and they're waiting to hear on that. And now they have like a format they can use. So their next meeting is September 19th. I have to assume it's going to be in here, although sometimes it's in the parks. So check the calendar if you're interested in joining. And then the Boston Spa Committee on the Arts also met August 16th. And they also talked about ASCC contract as one of the items. They are working on branding, marketing for themselves and for the artists in the village on the website, Facebook, and they have a website as well. They have business cards that are distributing. They're going to do a survey of art in the village. On September 1st in Iron Spring, there's going to be a plein air event. Basically, a painting event in the park. You can sign up for that at the Boston Spa Committee on the Arts Facebook page or website. And is it on the village Facebook page?
Oh, Facebook. I'm going to be putting out a Facebook post on it because Emma was pointing out how it's a holiday weekend and it may have a low subscribership based on that. So we're going to try to make sure that we get some people out.
Yeah, it'd be great for our, to use our social media in support of our committee or various committees. But thank you. And their next meeting is September 6th.
That's all for that. Thank you. Excuse me. So we're, I'm going to be treacherous for us, we're. And basically I'm not going to go verbatim through it, but there is a tallying of where we are revenues and expenses so far. General Fund, 13% of the budget's been expended as of basically two months in, I believe that's from July 31st end date. And sewer fund, 11% of its budget and library fund, 24.55% of the budget. That's not unusual. I think it's just the way things stack up, no pun intended. With library spending. So there's that. One thing to note, and this is two straight months after a minus month, county total tax and interest received was $14,328.58, which we got $124,165 in sales tax essentially. That's up 8.72% countywide last month. Or we received it in August. It's always offset by a couple of months. What may be happening is that the gas tax holiday was still intact at the same month last year. And then on top of it, I think we had higher gas prices that were forming around that time, too. So that's probably part of what we're seeing there. And obviously tourism was pretty good over a good portion of this late spring to early summer period. So good to see that the sales tax revenues are higher. That helps us out, obviously. Year to date, six months, so it was till June, it was up over 3.3 million or 4.31% overall those six months. So that's good to see. Next quarterly report and distribution will be in October when we can expect New York State Department of Taxation and Finance to apply adjustments in the current quarter. We will not know the amount of direction of any adjustments until that time. That's our treasurer's report and it is on file in the attachments. I have a quick presentation. I shouldn't say quick. They can make it as long as they like. But we are going to have Andy Mannion and/or Shannon Hanson, I'm not sure who's going to be the main speaker. It looks like Shannon's being pointed to here to talk about the Fansville Playground at Kelly Park and possible transfer of funds related to it. I'm learning about this for the first time. I didn't realize that all this existed, to be honest with you.
It's a little bit of a pain in the neck. So I felt like a little bit of a failure because fans of Boston Spa is dissolving. But then when I look back at the paperwork, it was actually 2007, which we incorporated. So that wasn't a bad run. So a little longer than I realized. It seems like yesterday. But to do a voluntary dissolution of the group, we have to go through a legal process. We have a volunteer lawyer that's helping us try to navigate. And thank you to you all, the lawyer and village lawyer as well, because we're going to ask that of you, because we do have money to give you, which is great. So we, as we go through this, we have a couple of things. We're going to need, we want to be able to present you with a check for $4,465.81 that we have closed our account. However, before we do that, we, our lawyers and the states, as we have to have a letter stating essentially that you guys will spend the money on playground maintenance. You have the exact wording somewhere, I know. And so we want to just guarantee that. Until that time, we're hoping that the village attorney can put the check in escrow because it's going to be a long process before we finally dissolve. And then that money will be, you know, for that purpose. So we are here to ask that the board approve a letter. And again, the wording I know you guys are working on exactly just stating that we'd like to get that money spent in that way.
And just for transparency, Carla and I have looked into the topic of whether or not we could earmark funds in this manner and the answer is yes. As long as it doesn't somehow debilitate our duties and abilities as board members, it does not in a case like this. And I cannot unilaterally sign off on a letter like that. So that's why it's up for board approval tonight. And then from there, we'll make sure layer information is exchanged so that the funds can be turned over, yada, yada. But we will see, again, a learning process. It's good to know this stuff, future reference for all of us. And but the long story short is it can be done and it will be done as long as we're all good with it.
Okay. So do we, you do the vote?
Well, we will get to that point a little bit later on. You're going to enjoy the rest of this meeting, I'm sure. Actually, out of respect, let's do it. I get a motion that the village accept $4,465.81 for fans with the following restriction. The funds are to be used exclusively for maintenance and or improvements toward the Kelly Park Fansville Playground. Furthermore, the mayor can provide or may provide fans a letter acknowledging acceptance of the funds with this restriction.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Baskin, trustee Fundensa, discussion. We do allow for the 92nd rule at this point, which is a public comment for 90 seconds. Anybody in the house want to speak? You can add to the motion if you like. You can speak, but hold on. She's going to try to change the motion for a second. Let's see what it is.
I just want to add, Ann, that the attorney for the village is, the attorney for the village is appointed as escrow agent to hold the funds within our escrow account until such time as all the parties indicated can be distributed.
I, will you accept that, Ben?
Yes.
For that?
Yeah.
Okay, the motion's amended. Ellie, go ahead if you like.
I just have a point of where this is not a new motion.
Right, but we haven't allowed public comment yet. So out of respect. Go ahead, Ellie.
Ellie Dillon, 116 Malta Avenue, Ballston Spa. I need to commend you and your group. In 2007, they had the entire village with children involved in this project and they put this playground on the map of Saratoga County. Wherever I went, people said, oh, we're going to Ballston Spa to this playground. And it's amazing. And I just want to acknowledge that, what a group of people did. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else in the house like to speak for up to 90 seconds? Anybody on Zoom? Seeing none. Any discussion for us? I would like to utter the whole thank you that Ellie did. It is great. Didn't see it coming, going to be honest with you. You know, when you're offering by email four thousand plus dollars, I'm like, sure, where do I sign? Pretty easy one. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, you, you're free to go.
Thank you very much, Charlie.
Thank you. I figure Andy has to sit through her own library board meetings and whatnot. So we're going to give her one of those repasses like that. Okay, old business, CDTA bus stop update. We've got confirmation that, and you may have seen on some of the Facebook activity on it, with respect to new design utilizing for the northbound 450 that is currently the stop at Malta Avenue and Route 50, moving it to where Reshop is essentially just past it. The village parking lot that's there. It will utilize a bump back instead of a bump out to get the bus shelter in place. It's a medium sized shelter seating three with room for more to stand inside it. Again, the idea here is we know that this stop in that direction is by far the most boarded stop that we have. A lot of people are coming from the Saratoga area to this stop, but they don't board until they're going back home essentially. So that's why that side is important. They are asking for permission to lose one parking space. I think we've indicated to them multiple times, you know, offhandedly that we've checked, I believe you checked with Reshop that they'd be okay with that one spot going away.
Yeah, I, just on that point, they definitely explicitly asked for our feedback if that was okay. I know me and Liz responded that we were okay with it, but I haven't heard from others. So if you, if you do respond, if you could CC all of us just to know we're all on the same boat and also they may be waiting for that response. Thank you.
No problem. But nonetheless, that will allow for easier boarding to occur with curb and everything, being able to go from the curb basically to bus using the space where there would have been parking, but no longer will be. So there's that. And the 450 will be making up to seven stops a day at the Department of Social Services starting September 3rd. We're going to get the exact timing and mapping of that very soon to make sure that we have the right information for everybody to see that we're going to be getting a more direct route to the DSS, County's DSS over on High Street. So stay tuned for that, but that's going to be a huge improvement. And then they're going to monitor the numbers in the village to see what effect that has on stops inside the village to see what might be necessitated from there. But it's a good progress moving forward here with respect to the move, the added stops on the DSS or return to stops at DSS and then some more evaluation to go forward. So very happy with the direction this is taking and hopefully our residents and our visitors will be as well.
Yeah, I'd like to thank trustee Baskin because I believe he, the first one who came up with the idea of putting in a reshop.
That was the laundromat owners, but
Oh, it was. Okay, it was a local business person. Yeah, so, and you know, I'm very happy to see that we're going to get a bus stop so that our our bus riders don't have to stand in the snow and rain anymore.
Oh, you mean shelter?
The bus shelter, sorry.
So there's that. Ethics code workshop. So you're going to see on the motions here, we have kind of a mishmash of ethics going on. And here's what happened. We ended up with some disagreement last week on the direction, the revisions of the ethics code we're taking. And sometimes whether or not the correct versions were being used. With some, let's say acrimony going on back and forth, just put it and get through this discussion as quickly as we can. I proposed just going reverting back to what the ethics committee had done in the first place, which was I think a year ago, Julie Gazitos and I were communicating earlier today. It's about a year now, about a year on that committee. So time has flown for sure, but without any real effect here. Carla remembered, and she's correct, looking back, that around Easter time, we were supposed to have a workshop with respect to ethics that didn't happen because we had a workshop that was stacked with sidewalk and ethics, if I remember correctly. And we didn't get through sidewalk in time to get to ethics and it never got rescheduled after that point. And so I apologize for that. I had lost track in that respect, too. But she suggested to alleviate the concerns and to give everybody an opportunity to be heard with respect to some of the changes being made. That workshop would be in order. And so the way that I've lined up the motions is to attempt to get a workshop as the first motion. And if that fails, then we're going to have possible public hearings at the next meeting, one of two, if not both. I guess it's technically possible. Ethics codes. So that's the reason it's stacked up the way it is inside the agenda motions. If anybody else wants to go at this point, go ahead, but I just want to explain what was going on there.
If I recall from back then, the reason that we dropped ethics off of a workshop is because it was basically, you know, 95% done and there was only some minor additions that board members were looking at. So we didn't feel we needed a workshop because we thought we would have more than enough time to collaborate offline and come up with a consensus. Unfortunately, that collaboration never occurred and there's months have gone by. And my assumption is, is that there wasn't any need for any collaboration and that's why there wasn't any. So, you know, you can check the minutes to verify my recollection, but I was fairly certain of that in that special meeting, that that was the intent, that we didn't need to set a workshop for it because we were very close to the finish line, and we could have deal with any negotiations or interpretations offline, as the public has said multiple, multiple times, that we should engage in.
Anybody else?
I'll discuss this under the motion, so we don't have to redo it twice.
For that?
Well, I think there was a disagreement as to whether there was a need for a change. And at this point, I don't recall the specific changes I'd have to review. But, you know, it would be good for us, we've had a lot on our plate, right? How many local codes and law changes? So it'd be worth sitting down and talking about it, maybe you guys explain why you want some of those changes. You know, different ethics committee members that helped write that have brought up, why hasn't it just been accepted as they wrote it? So, you know, it'd be good to maybe sit down and talk about it. Obviously, to your point, Sean, the collaboration just hasn't happened, but I think mainly because there's just been a lot going on. So it'd be good to set aside that time.
I have to agree with that because we ended up with thinking we were finishing with sidewalk code, ending up with new sidewalk code on our plate, a comprehensive plan finishing up, and parks code finally getting together because Carla finally got the time to do that. And that's on us, and it's not on Carla's. There's a limit to what she can do. And then there are a panoply of other issues that we kind of drive on her and then take our own focus off of things. And so when we kind of get a sudden, you know, flurry of email activity on, oh, let's revive this and go at it, it feels like a little bit of cram down, and I think that's unnecessary. We, you know, lived without changes for this long, let's go, you know, a few more weeks, get it right, and have something that we're all proud of. That's my general view here. But if Ben wants to go to motions for that discussion, then we'll just continue driving through at this point and go from there. Are you still in your mic, anything else you want to say? Or, okay, didn't want to cut you off. No new business of note here, public comment. Let me state that in public comment, or for public comment, you'll see motion B currently is reading the closure of Malta Avenue. We're going to change that to Grove Street after discussion between Ed Martin at the school district and Chief Bush today. There is a concern about closing Malta Avenue because it is such a feeder street for our first responders, et cetera, and especially at that time of day, it's just a concern to close Malta Avenue unless we absolutely need to, or we're sure that we have, you know, the preparation to do it, you know, the right way. So after that discussion, Ed Martin volunteered that Grove Street would be the appropriate place, so that change will be made to that motion. Okay, public comment, five minutes maximum. Anybody in the house like to speak? I see Christine getting up. She's making out. It was perfect timing on Christine. Very good. No need to apologize.
Mary Price Bush, 105 McLean Street, Family Fun Day, as you said, was a success and for that, right? Ben, Jen, thank you all. We spent the whole day there, we appreciate it. Little, I see a lot of people who helped out, we really do appreciate all of your help. We had some donation jars around, and we raised $2,053 from participants from Family Fun Day, and we've decided that we would like to donate that money to the victims of the Maui wildfires. And we are asking the board's approval that we donate the donation money that we received. We haven't decided on a specific group of, that's going to be decided our next meeting, if that is allowed. And that's it.
Okay, so unfortunately, being with remain areas, because it is village held funds, and I saw something about this when we were looking for what was going out, the library, or the dance discussion, rather, that it is impermissible for the village to donate village funds in a situation like that. Would you like to elaborate on it? Okay.
It's pretty simple, unfortunately.
Go ahead, simplify.
Because it was a village sponsored event, all the money came in, and the people thought they were donating to the village, and now the village cannot give a gift to somebody else, unfortunately.
May I? The money also came from sale of food that was donated to the event.
It's all village money. It's all, it's still village money, it's money that came into a village event.
So one thought here is this, I have not provided my $900 that I was supposed to yet, and since I have not provided my $900 to the village, I could in lieu give toward the charity that you want to give it to ultimately, since it's not money that's been touched by the village essentially. When we did a whole, they want to give me a raise, I refused to raise thing back when, all that stuff. So there's that, and there may be other money that didn't touch the village inside the event that might be similarly accessible. So we'll take this under advisement, we'll figure out what to do. It's a noble thing you're trying to do, by all means, we get that. And so we'll figure out some way to make something happen here, in some way, shape or form. By the way, Biddles, Caleb was a superstar that day, as I said on Facebook.
The jar on, the cotton candy thing said donation put in this jar going to Hawaii. Like, it was very clear that's what they were donating. In fact, they all, people who put it in the jar said, this is a great cause, I'm glad you guys are doing this, we put the money in there for our work.
We had four jars that were dedicated to that.
Also, National Guards Station basically had donations specific to the dunking booth, going back to them to go to Maui, so technically that's National Guards money.
I didn't mean to throw it.
No, no, I just didn't know anything about this.
So instead of, instead of catching our off guard, let's, we'll get back finding done here, and we'll figure out, again, we can't do a motion to do this ourselves, we know that much, but there are going to be other ways, I think, into deduce whose money was what, we can figure this out to make sure money gets to the right spot.
I think, you know, we can't do anything about this, but moving forward, events like that, if they were run strictly by a third party, like a non-for-profit organization, and we're not associated with the village, then any donations wouldn't be considered village funds. And that may be something you want to consider in the future for those types of events, is to have an independent party run, similar to the VSPPA, or some other non-for-profit organization. That would allow you also to seek out sponsors to help fund those events as well.
Just one question, Jeff, do you know how much was raised in the jars that were labeled for Maui?
$2,053.
So the all the, the 2,000 all went into those jars that were labeled for Maui?
All went into those jars.
Well, like I said, we can account for at least 900 of it to go in that direction, and then we'll figure out what we set National Guard station specifically, and then from there we'll figure out what to do. Okay, who else in the house? Ray. Sorry, Christine, you'll be next.
Right out in 16 Middlebrook Avenue. Yes, yes.
You're married, though.
Not to beat a dead horse, but I also want to thank the folks that I worked with on that committee, and those that worked that day. It was tremendous. There was 1,500 to 2,000 people wandering through this village. We had more participation by kids than I've seen in forever. We had the queen of cotton over here.
The street looked it.
She was the biggest bee attraction that there was. I think most of the problems we had with bees were because of her. It was, it was a great time. The folks that were in the dunking booth, thank you very much. You're both all wet, but, you know, you look good. It was, it was hilarious, and people were just loving it. I did see a video or a picture or something with Senator Tedesco, and I was wondering why he was dry.
He was trying to get me wet, is why.
Next year. But yeah, the folks, not only those on the committee, but those that helped out, they did tremendous. So I want to, I want to relate a little story about some kids. I live up on Middlebrook, right? Middlebrook.
16, no less.
That's up at the North End.
Oh, okay.
North End, for a lot of years in this village, has been considered a little bit lower esteem folks up there, and especially the kids, a lot of the kids up there tend to get the reputation of being a little, a little, a little less than ideal, okay? And all except for my kids, of course. But there were three kids that came to help out. Every day, most people know I sit on my porch, I read, and I talk to people as I go by, and I feed the dogs, I have dog biscuits in my pocket now, that's why, she likes me. But there's some kids that go by my house almost every day. And one day I stopped them, and I said, would you guys be interested in helping out this village? And one kid goes, how? And I said, by working at the Family Fun Day. These are 13, 14 year old kids. And they go, well, tell us more. So I told them about it. And those kids, the one kid, only one of them had a phone, he said, can I, well, can I have your number, and I want to check? Figuring he's going to check with mom or dad or whatever. He, I gave him my number, he called me back in about 20 minutes and said, we'd love to, three of us. They checked with me three times between that date and when the festival was. They showed up almost exactly when they said they were gone, and they were working our booths. And I've seen them since then, and they have said, Ray, we had a blast. And my girlfriend wants to help next year. And these are the kind of kids that live in this village. You know, it's not just one area, it's not just one economic group. These kids, I found out, were students of a teacher I know. And that teacher said, they aren't from the wealthiest family in the village. They're, they sometimes struggle, and they have their backstory and all. And I said to them, if you need me to sign off on your community service sheets, I'll do that. They said, what are those? They didn't even know. Now they know. Okay, so they want to get more involved. And like I say, these were three ruffians, if you will, that were walking down the street. And, you know, they, they just loved what they did, and they'll be back, they'll be back for other events. And I just want to relate those and, you know, thank them, and I've thanked them numerous times, for doing what they're doing. And we can recruit more kids, we can recruit more adults, we can recruit a lot more people to help in this village, because people in this village give a damn, and they, they want to see things like that event, and they want to see it more often. I have never received that, sitting at the information booth and riding around in my little buggy, so many compliments, and so many people saying, I want to see if I can help next year. And, you know, these guys will, will tell you, we had more vendors calling right up until what, the day before?
Yeah.
They want to, they want to participate, they want to participate. And next year, it's, it's going to be that. In fact, I'm taking a ride over to Stillwater, I want to see what they got to bring, because they're having a Family Fun Day, I think, next week, so. Just wanted to say that, thank you to everybody that came and helped, and all the, all the local businesses that gave us stuff. We had a lot of vendors that gave us things. And next year, the week after, we get to do a presentation, so we don't have to worry about the time.
There you go.
All right, thank you.
I did want to quickly say, I know which boys you're talking about, because they mentioned you when they came to the table. Let me tell you, they were dancing so hard at the family concert. It was great, and I'm just so glad that they felt free enough to just enjoy themselves as teenage boys, no less, to just dance and just be kids.
Good meeting them, I got a chance to later in the day. By the way, Ray, thank you for doing all the fitting to bike helmets that you did throughout the day, that was kind of a thankless job. That was only 159 of them, my goodness. I didn't hear, so we'll soon know. Christine, you're up, if you'd like.
Christine Fitzpatrick, 31 Chapman Street. I just, I'm not following on the agenda, this is with respect to the ethics code. I just want to know what it is we're talking about. The motion H talks, it, it doesn't match up with what was part of the appendix. So I have, in the appendix, there is motion D and motion E, which is with respect to the zoning, what it appeals, the zoning advisory board. So I am confused as to which attachment in the, in the appendix, is it motion D that is the revised ethics, ethics code, and is it motion E that is the original? Could you clarify that for me?
Right, motion D, I believe, and I apologize for this, when we start throwing things out at 3 o'clock on Fridays. Motion D should have, or what is labeled as motion D matches up with motion I, and then motion E matched up with motion J, and in the reverse also, the other ones related to.
So the original, the earlier ethics code was J?
The.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's all I wanted to know. Okay, thank you, now I can, okay.
Well, I'm sorry, the earlier ethics code, the one that came from the committee?
Right.
Is technically I. I is the one I'm supporting to, if you don't go to a workshop, I'm supporting what is labeled as the, it should be labeled as I.
Right, um, thank you. It was, that's, really was very unclear.
I apologize for that.
Okay, um, the other thing is, I want to thank also the, all the folks who handled Family Fun Day. It was really, really excellent. I, you know, it was great involvement. We were next to the Committee on the Arts, they had constant people there. I want to particularly, I don't know who was responsible for picking the space that the friends of the library and the library had, but I want to thank them very much, it was great space, I'd like it in perpetuity. I'm thinking of asking if it's approved could be incorporated in my will. It really was, it was great space, shady, it had a lot of activity, a lot of people passed by, we talked to them, many of them gave away a lot of books, which is always a good thing. So I just wanted to comment on that, that was, it was very good. And also on the DPW and all the work that they're doing, and, you know, I don't have the nerve to ever say it to them, but, I mean, besides, I have the nerve to tell them they're doing a good job, but I'm also worried that they're hydrated and they're wearing their sunscreen, so maybe somebody here.
Tell me to get Seth some sunscreen, he's redder than red. Seth. Yeah, Seth is red as beet every year. Okay, anybody else see Gina?
You're welcome, Christine. Gina Morosi, Tenille, Glory Lane. Couple things, first of all, I've got to do it too, Family Fun Day. You don't get it until you're at the gift, the prize booth, and you see children getting excited over getting school supplies.
Composition books.
Copyright, yeah. When you can see a family of four eat for under $20. It's just these heartwarming moments that are unbelievable, when a little kid runs up to me and hugs me and thanks me for helping put this on, it's just, it's amazing. And I just want to thank the task force, you guys, we worked together seamlessly, we didn't kill each other, it was great. All the volunteers, we are a village of friends, you guys, all, Camron, the Biddles, everybody, thank you. And the merchants, the involvement of the merchants this year, and they did so much, and they did crafts, and they, they did special sales, and there's so many food vendors that gave us food, donated it for the cause. But I also heard that the vendors did really well, the merchants did really well that day, a lot of foot traffic, a lot of sales, and that made me very happy. Lot of foot traffic, lot of sales, and that made me very happy. So that's Family Fun Day, it's a wrap, almost. Next, the picnic table thing, that's on the agenda. I just was looking at the specs for it and I was looking at the cost and then I looked at the shipping. And the shipping's over three hundred dollars. So I did a quick search on Google or whatever, the Safari, excuse me, Safari on my phone. And there are tables out there and right now there's companies offering free shipping. So I don't know who's in charge of that, but they might want to do a little bit more research. Tables are the same price, but there's free shipping and saves over three hundred and fifty dollars, just as a... I'm, I'm a bargain shopper. Ethics. I don't know, is it me? I mean, you guys pick the, you guys write the rules and laws that govern you? I really have, I mean, that's kind of a little crazy to me. I don't get to write laws that govern me or rules that govern me, it's up to other people to do that for me. But the fact that you guys get to pick and choose and change and rule over rules that govern you is a little confusing to me, to say the least. And maybe it's just me. Lastly, Family Fun Day hit, Family Fun Day cleanup hit. I had to run out of town for four days for a funeral in Pennsylvania. I called the mayor last night in a panic because I realized that I never asked permission to hold a nine eleven ceremony. We would like to hold, the, the events task force would like to do the nine eleven ceremony on Monday, nine eleven, at seven PM. With one road closure would be Front Street from Bath to, I think Science will do it, just that one block. And it's not on the agenda, but I'm asking if maybe you guys could put it on so that we could go ahead and move forward with that. It'll be a candlelight ceremony at, starting at seven. And I think that's it.
Would six thirty, eight for the closure be sufficient?
Yeah, we'll do it after, we'll close it after rush hour, yeah.
And for those wondering, our meeting is actually pre-scheduled already for nine twelve. This is caught in advance and was scheduled as such as Tuesday, September twelfth meeting, our next meeting. So we are not meeting on September eleventh here, September twelfth, that same normal time in place.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Jared.
Good evening, Jared Agarucci, twenty-four Chapman Street. I'm glad to hear Family Fun Day was successful, I was out of town, but it's great to hear the event went off well and there was a lot of participation there. I'm also glad to see there are public hearing for the comprehensive plan has wrapped and hopefully we can forward with that. I just have a couple of comments on some of the agenda items here, first on the ethics. I did have the same confusion as Christine regarding which piece was which, but hopefully you can bear with me here. I do think it's incredibly important for a strong ethics code. I think if any of us look around our national political landscape over the last ten years, we see a real important need for codifying strong ethics rather than relying on norms as we've done for so long. And from what I can tell, there are really two substantial differences in the versions that are included in the appendix. I'm sure there are others, but I didn't have time to do a full close reading. The first is that in motion D, the, the version labeled as motion D, it excludes an annual disclosure form that would need to be filled out by village officers. An annual disclosure, the way I understand the way it's written, would ensure that there's clear transparency into all of our village officers outside employment and any private interests that might influence and affect the way that they legislate and govern. To me, that, that's a critical insight into the interest of all of our government officials. And I'd love to see something like that in a final ethics code. The second version, excuse me, version D also leaves out the section on enforcement and penalties. And I think it, it just uses language such as the ethics board will let you find, I don't remember exactly the way.
Determine under law or what's allowed them to law.
Yeah. So the version E, however, clearly spells out how those different enforcement pieces would be conducted against the different parties that would be involved and enforced under our ethics code. I'd love to see something with that specificity as well, so that it's clear for all of our village residents as well as our officials, what their expectations are. For those reasons, I would support passage of the version E, the version that is labeled as the, excuse me. The second piece I wanted to touch on is the zoning advisory committee. As we wrap the comprehensive plan, I'm glad to see we're moving right into that. I, I am just, again, I only see really one difference here. And that's in the population of the committee. The first, I think it's labeled as I, that has thirteen members.
The, the D is I and E is J.
Yes. I'm not sure why there would be automatic appointments for other members of boards in the village, the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, and even the building inspector. There's clearly a lot, a lot of expertise within those folks. But as far as I understand it, we don't automatically appoint folks based on other board or committee memberships to a new committee. This would be a separate and unique committee with a very specific goal in mind. So again, recognizing that those folks would have experience here, couldn't they provide that experience through consultation rather than as committee members, thereby allowing the committee to, to remain kind of free with as much information as possible as a unique and separate committee apart from the zoning board of appeals and the planning board? And that's all, thank you.
I'm glad you raised your first point on the ethics situation about the disclosure form, because actually last week, I, I foresaw people thinking, I have an issue with what E or K or whatever, heck, it is a K or... And I actually, as an exercise, filled out what would be the one that was in E, you're, you're the labor one here. And shared my answers with the board and said to the board, I would like you two, before we ever vote on this, to do the same. Because at the end of the day, all officers is what is indicated here, which goes beyond us. So if we're not willing to do it, how are we going to expect anybody else to do it that would be, subject to the imposition of this ultimately? Ben did, and nobody else so far has taken me up on that. And that's a concern to me, because again, if we're not willing to go there, that, in, of our free will, let's say, because it's not a requirement right now, obviously it's not passed, then how do we sit here as public officials and impose that on somebody else? That, that was my problem with it and that's why I wanted to make sure, you know, nobody's going to say Frank doesn't want to show us anything. It's really not that big a deal for me personally, the way it's spelled out. And it might be a big deal for somebody else, but not for nefarious reasons, but for privacy reasons, something along those lines. And so I, I don't know, and that's what I wanted to see through that exercise ultimately. So two out of five so far done it, me and Ben. And I think, I, I want to say Sean and Bernadette, who worked with the state or the assembly, have filled out some kind of heightened, you know, form or something that, I don't know if it matches up. I, I have never seen it and they can tell us better than me. But that's kind of where we're at with that idea. And I just want to be fully transparent on that idea, okay?
Can I just?
Sure.
One, one bit there, sorry.
Sure.
And I, I hear you on that. And I would be surprised if people voluntarily wanted to do it as well. And that's really my point, is that we've relied on voluntary disclosure, on that being a norm. We haven't codified it effectively, and that's what I notice.
By the way, I just completed a recertification for the WBE for the state. That required all my financials, everything that I own financially. Property, relatives, it goes way beyond whatever, you know, and I have no problem filling that out. I think it's a little bit of a, you know, trick to say, well, you fill this out and I'm, you know, this. And, and you didn't complete it.
I didn't complete it?
No. You didn't put the name of your, what organization, do you have an LLC?
No, I do not.
You don't?
No.
Interesting.
I am a, my Schedule C is Frank S. Rossi the second, just like me.
You're a person?
Yeah. I am self-employed and that's what a Schedule C does.
I'm self-employed too and I have an LLC.
Well, good for you. You're a single, you're a si- a single member LLC, that's why you're able to use Schedule C. If you were a multi-member LLC, you could not use Schedule C. I'm just indicating that's why there's no difference between a sole proprietor in that situation and a single member LLC. The federal government doesn't see a difference in that effect ultimately, and you don't get the same protections in that.
As long as we're talking about the disclosure form, I thought it was a good exercise, fill it out. I, it did give me some insights into how it could be modified. And what I did was I went to the town of Boston as a disclosure form, right in their ethics laws, right? The whole thing is right there, the form itself. And, and as a result of doing the exercise, I edited the, that section so that it's really just asking about village-related business, village-related connections, not, you know... Because the form, I think, originally came from like town of Milton, so everything, many of the things we do, not making it up, it's like coming somewhere. But it, it, before it had like, you know, where does your spouse work, regardless of whether it had anything to do with the village? And me filling it out made me realize, my wife wants nothing to do with what's going on here.
Thank God for her, huh?
So anyway, it just made me realize, though, what's important is what is related to, if she had a job related to the village, you know, doing business with the village, then it would be relevant. But she works at Skidmore's, so it's not relevant. But, um, anyway, so that was a good exercise, but I asked for feedback from it, from Frank and everybody else and didn't really get feedback, so I used my own, you know, insight on that, but...
I, I was hoping others would give you feedback, as I said, I don't want to bias other people's feedback, so I kind of sat back on it to see what other people had said.
Right, so I, I had to rely on my own thoughts on this, but I've always encouraged and sought feedback throughout this process.
With respect to the ten versus thirteen and the other members, Jared, the ultimate issue, a couple of things that came up. Carla had put us, or was in touch herself with a friend of hers who does this type of rewriting zoning type of things. She, they will not be bidding on this project or anything like that, representing a proposal. And they provided expertise, a couple of things they said in particular, make sure it's always an odd number. So the ten originally was not the correct, you know, that is go nine eleven thirteen in the whole thing. The other thing they did say was not using zoning and planning board chairs, but for the reason of you overtax them in many circumstances with their duty, other duties. In our village, that's not really the case, and Anna, where I'll probably come here and beat me up to that. But the idea is that we don't meet at such a frequency with so many things on plate each meeting that it would preclude them from being able to, you know, make the time to make it happen. The other thing we have to realize is that they did, in the past, already do some documentation of deficiencies or errata in the code to route it, not just in zoning, I think, but to route the code. And so this is something that they've actually done for a number of years and spotted this. And so that's what, why the idea was, well, they probably would be of great value. And Dave Fountain, as billing inspector slash code enforcement officer, deals with the issues every day. And how many times has he come to me saying, well, the code says, but we do this, and it's, it's mad. It is, and so while I get what you're saying, I feel like that they are more beneficial to actually be an active part more than just a side part in that respect, that we have to defer to because of their connection to that problem set that we have in our code currently. There's no doubt we have problems in our code, there's no doubt about it. Thank you though for bringing both of those points. Anybody else in the house? Bob?
Bob, who's anyone here, Chad? Jamie, pass home with thunder with the picnic table?
Well, it's not the shipping, I'm sorry.
I, I get it.
It's freight, it's called freight.
But to go with her, she said, you can get it for free while the sooner we, while everyone else was coming. I looked up the picnic table for a same kind of picnic table you can get for eight hundred and fifteen dollars. If you can get like two of them for the price of what they're, what are you going to get, what are you going to approve here? Just a thought, I think there needs to be more research into it?
We can approve it with an absolute seat probably tonight and then finish up on that over the next couple of days, I think, so that we can do the bargain hunting to make sure we're getting equivalent goods ultimately. So you've been heard and I've actually made a note to make a change in this as well.
One question I had though was, isn't there a limit to get to like a free bid type of thing?
No, it doesn't reach the pricing required for that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Can I comment? They did look at less expensive, but the quality of the material that it's made out of, it looks this... But it's much more lightweight and not suitable for public park use. And that was, that's why it's more expensive. And I think Ray can, can back that with his experience with playground equipment.
Really, they definitely did research, that's not to say there's more information. And so if you want to send it forward, what you found, we certainly share it with them.
So we, we, we can make an approval happen tonight, it's just, it'll work for our benefit to make sure we're getting the best, best pricing there. Anybody else in the house? I think Mike Icaucci is the only hand I see on Zoom currently. I'm sorry, Mike, the waiting forever, I apologize for that. Go ahead.
Thank you and good evening, Mike Icaucci, nine Russell Street. I want to thank Terry or Jen or whoever is responsible for getting materials onto the website. It is very helpful to be able to see that stuff. I also want to apologize because I did not devote enough time to thoroughly read through the various things. A request, and, and you, you've dealt with this to some degree, but prior to taking any vote on the advisory committee charter and on the ethics code, I, I'd ask that each of Mayor Rossi and Trustee Baskin give a brief explanation as to why that particular proposal is felt to be the most appropriate. Because unlike Jared, I did not even get to the point of being able to highlight differences between the two. So it would be very helpful to me and perhaps to others to hear from the authors as to why that particular version is preferred. Thank you.
Actually, I would give this over to Bernadette because she actually crafted the other one. So I'll let her explain that when we get to that point of, or get to board response, whatever they want to do ultimately. But we'll take that and hopefully get you the answer you're looking for. Thank you, Mike. And anybody else in the house who are on Zoom, last chance for public comment with respect to the agenda items or anything else? And seeing none, we will move to board response. I'll look for lights on microphones, Ben, yours is on.
And I, just to keep the meeting moving, I'm fine talking about whatever we're going to talk about under the motions.
And FYI, we'll add the motion for nine eleven if there's no objection for the nine eleven ceremony and the closure. So that will be something probably labeled as L at this point.
Just real brief comment regarding the disclosure forms. Yeah, Sean and I will have to fill out disclosure forms. In-depth like spouse questions and so, you know, happy to do that. And thank you, Mayor, for also filling it out and, and pointing that out to us. So I, I, I think we can continue working on all of this together.
Yeah, I would echo that. I have no issue filling out a disclosure form. I was actually out of town last week, I'd been trying to catch up on emails. So if somebody could do the graciousness of maybe sending it again, so it's on top of the stack.
A hundred emails, you can't find it, what's wrong with you, man? There, everyone else, so I noticed we set a bubble in our connection, but I think we're back to normal. Yeah, still connected actually to my iPad. It's a little late. I'm going to assume Andy wants to talk about Family Fun Day.
Hi Frank, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I'll make this really short.
Okay, I'll make this really short since I'm sneaking upstairs and I have company downstairs. But yeah, regarding fun day, I don't want to keep reiterating, but there were just a couple of things that were amazing. The crowd was amazing. The morning group, there was a couple there that raises dogs specifically to work with autistic children. And I happened to witness a scene that was going on and it was incredible what this dog did, how this child stopped stemming, calmed down. And she said, I would like to come back every year to keep doing this. It was amazing. Also, the afternoon, I was over at the dealing at macaroni and someone came over with a hundred dollar bill for a one dollar, you know, thing of macaroni. So I said, well, could you just hang on? I have to go over to the whatever and get some change. So these three ladies were behind her, came up, they said, you go ahead, we'll work with Pat Burnham, dealing out the macaroni, whatever, came back, gave her the $99 and change. And the three of them wrote their names down and said, we absolutely want to come back here next year and volunteer. And they were not from Boston Spa, they were from Galway. And then one man came over when he saw that I was leaving to go get change. And he said, hey, I'd like to give you a tip. And I said, oh, no, no. But I said, there's a donation George here specifically for Maui, and he threw in $10. So just want to say that it was, the day was incredible beyond, I think, anyone's expectations. And it was, it was a fun day. Thanks for listening. Bye bye.
Thank you, Manny. Okay, we are in board response, but I figured she was going to tell us about family fun day. So yeah, go ahead.
I also just want to thank all the volunteers who did it. And I knew you guys could do it as a group of volunteers, like you did it, the village did it. And the village is big enough and generous enough that volunteers can do this kind of day. And I'm very happy that you made it a success. So thank you very much for doing that. And you proved it could be done.
Okay, anybody else on board response? I will say the following, one thing that you don't realize, a lot of you, is that the task force especially did a lot of things which we'll call gifts and kind for the event that will not necessarily show up as readily with respect to, you know, money toward the event, et cetera. But there was a lot of, I mean, Donna Dardaris, I don't even know where to begin with her. I wish she was here so I could give her a hug. But at the same time, you know, she's just incredible. Everybody that I gave, Ray, I know you were working with her on that as well. And Lori and Rory as well, Manny, all of you, I know what you did. And we're trying to quantify it because I think it's important to know the real cost or value of the event so that we are fully aware of this scenario. I think it's the only right, fair thing to do to quantify it. And we're taking our time to figure out, you know, what we are counting for in that respect. But you folks are special beyond words that I have, especially feeling the way I do tonight. So I'm just going to say thank you and you just rock. That's all I can say to all of you. So thank you.
I think the accounting will be ready for next meeting.
Probably not. I told you, probably four to six weeks, just to make sure we got it, four to six weeks.
That's a lot of time for.
It's not a small undertaking. What was going on, especially toward the end of it, things were getting kind of just thrown into that mix. And so we want to make sure we've got a true number, not a partial number. I think that's the only right thing to do.
One thing that could happen more quickly is just how much, how many funds of the villages was spent on what? So of the 15,000, that I'm sure can be done by next meeting. And then we can have the rest of the in-kind following that if that's difficult to do, but.
That's actually backward because the way, the order of events for payments are going to be county money that we're receiving about $5,000 from the county. Then donations from individuals, the village money will be the last money touched because it's technically something that we could re-point toward other events, et cetera, ultimately, or roll over into next year. And so the idea here is to honor earmarks where possible in those situations. Doesn't mean we're guaranteeing anything, but we're trying to honor the earmarks on checks that were given to the village for the event. And the county's money, which we don't have as much flexibility with. So the village money is the last money to get touched. So that's why it's the toughest part to tell you what was spent in that pool.
Well, don't you have what was spent? In other words?
No.
Yeah, yeah.
They're working on it.
What was spent financially?
Financially, yeah. What was spent to buy this, buy the, everything that was used there was already purchased.
Invoices are still coming in as well as donations.
No, I'm not talking.
Both are matter, but both matter for the defense question especially, so.
So we got 5,000 from the county?
We're finishing up to get that, yes.
We don't have it yet, but.
We're finishing up, yep.
All right, that's the first time I've heard of that.
Plus all the donations that we raised.
So that's why it's a little more complex than all that. But here's one thing I will say compared to how it happened last year, and thanks to Carla for this. It was done in a much more orderly, you know, rules-first mechanism. Because last year we kind of were just kind of off guard trying to do this event and everything else with ASK involved, everything else. And actually, I don't even know if ASK was officially involved at that point, but the whole setup was a little bit convoluted. We got an event off and it was great. This year, we kind of went to Carla at all times when there was doubts and said, what can you do? What can we do? And she was not shy to lay down the law because she's a lawyer. But nonetheless, she made sure that we were doing things in a much better manner so that we have a template to continue to use that for future events and future family fun day. So thanks to Carla for all of her guidance throughout this whole activity too.
Thank you, Carla.
She came back to town after dropping Chris off and Bella was with her and Bella didn't tell her to stop though.
No, she had to go to the bathroom, trust me.
You made an excellent choice of that with the intent. Okay. Can I get a motion that the DPWV authorized expend the amount of approximately $6,000 for breaks for the tandem dump truck? I'm taking out not to exceed because we know it's just under 6,000 now.
I'll make the motion.
Sean and Bernadette on that one, discussion?
$6,000 for brakes? Is it that expensive on a truck?
A tandem dump truck? Have you ever tried to stop a tandem dump truck?
I mean, it just sounds like it's a lot of money.
Have you been to the mechanic shop lately?
You know. Clearly not. Liz, it's not too late to get your CDL though. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Oh goodness, gotta get a motion approving the closing of Grove Street from 3:30 PM until 5:00 PM on Wednesday, September 6, 2023, for the annual back to school block party at Malta Avenue School.
I'll make the motion.
I'm going to give it to Ben and Liz with the second.
Is it Grove? You said Grove, not Malta?
Grove. Ben, and just said Grove to me. I mean, I mean, if you want to provisionally save pine as well.
It's big to end up using pine.
Okay, so Ben, you said they changed closing of Grove Street and pine.
Yes, and we're sure they don't need Malta closed.
And Liz, you're okay with your own application? Okay, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. C has been dealt with. D, can I get a motion to approve the attached zoning advisory committee charter? Okay, so we have Dean. Why don't we take a step back here for a second? Which is really I and J. So Bernie, talk about the one label is I. Ben, talk about the one label is J. And I guess in real time, we're going to see if we can play, let's make a deal of some sort here. I'll be your host, Monty Hall.
You didn't give me my cue. Just so to explain, and I think you can gather a little bit why. We thought it was important. Finally, okay. The gist of it generally is that we have our zoning and planning board, you know, members, they deal with it. You know, when I used to be on ZBA, we come across these same applications over and over again that due to our, you know, complicated code in the sense that it's kind of doesn't work for us. We have these same applications. So over the years, the zoning chair and the planning chair have been compiling a list of code areas and specific code that needs to be addressed. So I had suggested, and I think the mayor might have suggested as well, that we just include them, make sure they're already guaranteed to be included as part of this committee. And more than just, you know, the one time, one or two times they're consulted so that they can continually talk about this. Maybe other things arise while they're on the committee, their own boards, excuse me. And the bigger thing for me is, you know, some were suggesting, well, just appoint them as your appointment or they could be a appointment. And while I definitely hear that, I wanted to ensure larger community involvement. I didn't want it to eat up like one of the 10 positions, you know? So that was really why I suggested that change. And, you know, it's just a disagreement, I think, as far as how involved or not involved. But for me, it was to maximize community and resident or stakeholder involvement. So that's why I thought just include it as a right and then have the 10. And you have a lot of people just passionate about it and, you know, involving themselves with this issue. I think everybody agrees that our zoning needs changes. So I thought more eyes that are passionate about the issue on it is a good thing, so.
And also, I think one change in yours who said we are not allowing us to be selected.
Oh yeah, we don't need to be on it.
We'll have our input later.
Well, I think that's the thing. We, you know, there's no point of having board members here. We already get to weigh in on all these things at the end of the day, you know, that come before us. Thank you for reminding me about that part. And while many of us are very involved with zoning in different ways, you know, Sean and his career, Ben and I were both on planning boards in our respective towns and Liz is very involved and passionate about it. And, you know, Frank with development out of it, we really, I'd rather hear from the community. And again, those zoning and planning board experts as well as our building inspector, so.
Okay, and Ben, as Mike Iclucci suggested, probably a good time to do the point counterpoint on, you know, the two different versions here. So go ahead.
Yeah, so in the spirit of compromise, I'm willing to change the charter to accommodate 11 people. And as we've discussed, you guys are free to nominate anybody you want. And that can be the planning and zoning board chairs as well as the building inspector. And 11 people is enough for a committee and it's an odd number. And it's a compromise from what we have, which was 10. As far as the nominating board members, we've already been through that. I don't think it's necessary on the charter. No one was intending to go through that again and have that long discussion. So I don't think it's needed to add. But in terms of an amendment to my version of the charter, I would go up one to make it 11. And that allows plenty of community input. As far as the formatting of this agenda, I have to say it's kind of a mess. I don't think it's necessar, I think it's strange and has the function of muddying the waters and extending the meeting to have, you know, so I wrote both your, both these motions. I wrote the motion that has my name and then the exact same motion that has your guys' names. And I wrote it before Thursday at noon deadline. And I didn't see yours till Friday. We never see yours till after the deadline. And I think it's not a proper way to put motions together and agenda. I think what we do is we have a single motion by whoever submits it first. And then you have a charter and then you discuss that charter. So I just think it's inappropriate to use someone else's language after the deadline for the motion and then put your motion in front of the motion that was submitted first. At least have the courtesy of putting the motions in the order they're submitted and not repeatedly putting your own in front of a motion that came earlier and copycatting, you know, copying it. I just find that inappropriate. So here we are having this discussion about two motions in this sort of informal way that is, doesn't follow any protocol. And it's not necessary and it'll extend it. So now we're going to be reading yours, we're going to vote on that, we're going to vote on the second one. I just think it's not a good way to do a business. But that's in terms of the substance, that's where I am. I'd like to hope that you would. I think that would work fine. We are very interested in the participation of the zoning chair and the planning chair. And all their input can be used by the committee if you choose not to put them on the committee. But you are more than welcome to put these people on the committee and we will have a nice, strong 11-person committee.
If I may for one second, just to hit one point, there's a reason I took a step back here with Dean. Okay, it's not like I, somebody had to go first in terms of order, but we're not taking, I didn't call for a motion on either one of these out of respect. So at this point, as it says in the footnote, consensus couldn't be reached. What am I to do as presiding officer here but basically put both on? That's my only choice in that situation. And I did so ultimately. I consulted with our attorney to make sure that, you know, this is probably the way to handle it under the circumstances. And that was the consensus we reached on Friday to put them both on. Because I literally called up Carla and I'm like, I don't know what the hell to put on this agenda at this point with respect to these things. And so that's the only way we can handle it when this happens in this type of situation. There's not a compromise literally happening in real time for Thursday to Friday ultimately. Go ahead, sorry.
Oh yeah, no, but I, I don't, at least from my part, I didn't intend it to seem as if, of course, you wrote the original and what I did was add to, and I thought it was a very good start. I just had those specific concerns. I, well, we don't want to get into, we provided some of that back and forth, the edited versions, and it was not received well. And, you know, sometimes we like to say that we like to do some of this background negotiation, but it just, it doesn't happen. So I'm sorry that you felt like we were taking, I personally don't, I don't care, you know, to take anyone's thunder or anything like that. But do you think those two points are important? I don't know, I know you say you don't want to, you know, have, none of us want to go through that process of getting of what the appointments were for the committees as far as regarding board members, but it might just be good as just a, you know, a note that like we agree to not do that, appoint board members to that committee. Because currently, board members go to other committee meetings and kind of insert them a lot in committee meetings. So I just think that can't hurt, you know?
Well, I'll accept that if you accept 11 for the side of the committee.
I'm fine with the number. I wonder if there's a way that we could also just acknowledge that we want, I got to reread your language again. I'm sorry.
I would say, okay, at least the 11th is the zoning board chair, since that is the most relevant of the boards in that situation. And I think she probably is more than willing.
It goes a lot with like the problems with code, and I think that might be wise, honestly.
So right now, I know I nominated two people, you nominated two people.
No, we haven't seen names from anyone else. It's all surprises here, you know?
Frank, that's fine.
Adopted committee policy and procedures. We would each get to pick two. That's why the 10 number came in. I do see the value in having an odd number in case there's a split decision. I think that makes sense. Also, within our committee procedures, it means that obviously if there's an odd number, that pick goes to the mayor. So in my mind, if, you know, Ben picks two, I pick two. Liz picks two, Bernadette picks two, and then Frank picks three. And I personally, in our. And I personally, in our policy, committee policies, there's no auto appointments. So I think that's a bad precedent. I wouldn't do it. If you want to take your picks and use them, that's fine. I would also advise because of workload that the chairs of any other board or committee shouldn't be the chair of this committee.
Well, it's up to them to make that decision. So up to the, up to the committee.
Ultimately, obviously, that, that creates a big workload. This is going to be a very um, difficult. Chair is going to have a lot on their plate. And if you already have a lot on your plate, I think that's, that's a bad start right from the beginning.
So you are suggesting, if I can't hear, a motion to approve the attached zoning advisory committee charter labeled as I. I'm sorry, S J, S J, excuse me.
I'll assume that's the one I wrote.
Ben's.
We still haven't used all the letters.
Oh, yeah.
Oh. So, okay, let's go back to I. Okay, we'll go back to I with the following changes on I. The number of members will change from 13 to 11.
What is wrong with, what is wrong with the charter that I wrote? Which your charter is based on.
I, I did edit for grammar.
I think my charter reads fine.
I write for a living.
I, I write all the, I've written thousands of pages. I think it's fine. I read your, I read your amendments and I didn't see any improvement. I don't think it's necessary.
Can we just pick a motion?
Yeah, I'm going to pick I as the presiding officer, work on I and say success.
I'm gonna pick J. That's what I would.
I'm just calling, I'm just calling for a motion at this point, folks. So there would be.
So I'm super.
Can I get a motion approving the attached zoning advisory committee charter labeled as I, amended by Bernadette, uh, or trustee of Fandesa, uh, with the following changes. The number of members shall be changed from 13 to 11. The automatic uh, choices of the zoning chair, zoning board chair, the planning board chair, and the building inspector slash code enforcement officer will be removed. There will be a provision added to uh, prevent a board chair or committee chair from chairing this committee. Is that accurate from what you were hoping for there? And was that the only set of changes? No, okay, what else you got?
There's a sentence in.
Oh, yep, you're fine.
There's a sentence in um, the one that was revised that says, no member of the board of trustees may select a member of the board, including themselves.
Again, this seems to be easier if we just take J and amend it because.
Yeah, let's just take J too.
So, so.
But J, but I'm not being a jerk here. The one that she amended, her amendments are in a Word document. I don't have a Word document and I'm trying to amend it of yours and I'm trying to amend it real fast.
I, I just think it's a little disrespectful that I wrote the charter, I wrote the motion, and they're being substituted for copycat things.
And again, no, no insult is meant here. But it's part of conversation and background and email. We provided some amendments and, and changes. Certainly, put, put Ben's name on the motion. I, I don't need to have my name on it. He did work. All I did was add two and some grammatical changes. That is all.
All right, I'll accept that compromise. That, that.
Are you okay with both earnings on it?
Motion. No, no, it's my motion.
It's very childish.
No, what's childish and ridiculous is, is copying my motion and putting it in front of my.
Writing in this board is often very, like, all I was doing was offering some minor things and you took it very offended. And I'm sorry you're so offended. But certainly, let's move forward. I, this is silly.
I think you should hear that it is offensive for someone's work to be.
And you're so easily offended. I'm sorry.
Interrupting me. You were interrupting me. I want you to know that if this happened to you, if you wrote a motion and the mayor put someone else's motion right in front of yours, the exact same wording, you'd take offense. Anyone would. It's, it's ridiculous. It's weird. And uh, so yes, I'd like the motion to be from me. I did the work. I wrote the motion. I wrote your motion. And I wrote your charter except for a few edits. And uh, I am willing to compromise by saying, all right, we'll use your, your motion with 11-person limit and the motion as written by me. And that's fine.
Okay. So.
With the addition that the chair cannot be another, the chair of another board.
Yes, we're adding that.
So.
Okay, good.
So uh, how would you like this?
Why don't you table, you know, withdraw both of those and then let Ben create this new motion?
Liz, we're trying to make this just go away right now. Let's just finish this.
That's good.
Yes. Right now.
We have a compromise. We'll use the charter that, that Carla has in work form and it'll be my motion.
Like it matters.
That one sentence. So I've changed it from well, it was 12 here to 11. I've taken out chairs of the zoning board of appeals and the planning board to be on it. I've taken that sentence out.
Okay. All right, I just want to emphasize, we often don't do a full motion with the full faith that things will be implemented even without that motion. And I am, I, I, I did that in faith that you guys, Frank, I'm talking to you really, will, will do this. So thank you for following and completing your word.
Moving along, uh, let's go to attorney time here. Attorney time with Carla. I'm sorry.
First of all, I'd like to bring up.
No, you cannot make a motion like the one you were trying to do earlier with respect to this. There are, there is a actual set procedure for approving a comprehensive plan. And you weren't getting that from the most, from the discussion, rather, from Carla all day long. There is literally a procedure we are about to follow for an approval of seeker and for a comprehensive plan that is mandated by law. And we're about to do that. And we have to discuss also if we're incorporating the change or not that is being recommended by John Cromer earlier. Uh, and it sounds like others as well.
So, but I did make a motion.
And congratulations on that. But what happened was that for a few weeks, we've had documents from Carla that are what we need for an approval of comprehensive plan.
And the last motion I made is, is not proper. Does it sign a resolution or authorize?
No, it's not. It is not.
That's the same wording she had on, on yours. I think it's fine.
Nonetheless, could you walk us, could you, well, okay, I, I don't either at this point. I just want to make sure we're walking through the state mandated procedure to approve this. And we're going to hand that over to Carla as lawyer to do, to walk us through this process. And if you need me to read something, let me know what document you want me to read in the process.
But again, the, the issue that Liz brings up is there seems to be.
Me, 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 me. I get it. Okay, let's move on.
No, no, it seems to be a pattern of you not uh, either accepting motions that we put forward.
Ben, it wasn't legal.
Then you work with Liz to make it legal when she submits a motion.
Carla attempted 20 different emails. They explained to her what was going on.
20 different emails.
It was close.
Still, I asked her advice how to make my motion legal. And I believe I have a legal motion in front of me here, which I sent out this morning.
Liz?
Based on her advice.
Why don't we let her prove why she spent a lot of money and a lot of loans now to go to law school and do what we tasked her to do because this is a legal process right now.
That's why I asked her to make sure that my motion was in the right form. That's, that's what she's here to do. One of the things she's here to do.
She's going to do that right now. Thank you, Carla. Take it away.
The issue is, the issue is that I want people to understand is that these trustees, us trustees have to have equal access to this agenda. We have to have access that we cannot be told something is improper and won't go on.
Yes, you can. It actually is in the rules procedure. Yes, it is.
No, it isn't.
Yes.
You cannot withhold a motion off the.
If it is improper or illegal, absolutely can't.
Say that.
Well, guess what, folks?
Your judgment determines.
It's not a judgment, it is a reality. There is a process. Ben, 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 call NICOM tomorrow, okay? I know you will.
The process is to put the motion on and in the meeting, if you have have a concern with it being legal, it gets addressed in the meeting and corrected.
Or even, that's why Thursday at noon is the deadline so that we can talk about what is a legal motion, what is a proper motion. It, it, that's why you have lead time. And we, we have never had a proper motion from you or Bernadette because it never comes in before 12 Thursday.
And so, no offense, you had Bernadette edits your Zach uh, charter on Wednesday of last week.
The motion that appears on the agenda did not appear until the agenda appeared on Friday.
Because legal assets may changes.
I would appreciate it if you guys would, would follow the.
I would appreciate if you realize that our job is to do things for the village of Boston Spa, not for ourselves. And ultimately, we're trying to make sure we're getting things done for this village, not going me, me, me.
Your, your job, you say me, me, me. The issue is this board, there needs to be integrity for this board and everyone who's on it. And it's not you to squeeze out the rest of us from having active participation and input into this agenda in an appropriate way. You can't, it's not appropriate to keep people's motions off just because you want to or to duplicate motions just because you want to put it in front because it's a good idea and you want to do it first. It's not appropriate. I think we need to be, we need to be shown the respect of being elected officials here. And when we put on a motion, doesn't mean it's the final form. It means and often when I put a for, when I put a motion forward and Liz does this too, tell us, tell me, tell Liz, what do you want to see changed in this? How should it be appropriate?
She did.
You didn't tell me how to correct it. You just told me it was illegal.
I'm talking about the motion itself at this point.
Okay. Anyway, that's been an issue. All right, go ahead. Carla?
Hi. So the village has gone through an extensive comprehensive plan process. And um, I spoke with John Behan earlier today who is ready and able to be here. I have his cell number if we need to, but I said there's probably no reason to. He had submitted some information to the board on Friday afternoon, um, because I had brought him back into the loop. He was kind of out of the loop. I brought him back into the loop with respect to um, the potential change that there was a motion by trustee Baskin that had some changes to it. So I wanted John's input on that. John submitted a substantive email back to the board. Two of the trustees did respond um, and said that they were fine with leaving it as it is. That was before John Cromer's response tonight. So what we would have to do tonight, and it has to be in this order, unfortunately, village law requires it in this order. You go through your seeker. And what that is, is we will go through part two. There are questions that I can sit here and ask out loud and ask for the board to answer the questions. Or um, John Behan and I put together um, the seeker and the responses to it on part two. And you can um, accept responses that are there. That's up to you. I, I've done it both ways. It really doesn't matter to me whether you want me to read them or you want to just accept them. After part two, which for the public part two basically says, is this environmentally okay? Don't ask me why. The adoption of a law, not the actual development. The law itself is part of seeker. That's just the way it is. Then there's part three, which is a narrative which John Behan did draft up. His company did draft up. I went through it with him. And that's whether you would accept that as a negative declaration. Again, we can read that or you can go through it and just accept it. After you've done seeker, there is a resolution that um, would be adopted. And the resolution incorporates your negative declaration and the adoption of the law. So that's why there's not a motion to, it's already in the actual language of the resolution. Um, and I apologize if I didn't say that clear enough today, but the, the motion that was presented is in the resolution. So the resolution is the motion. That being said, if you want to make a change though, we should do that before we do the second, the resolution. So we do seeker, change, resolution. Does that make sense to everybody?
But we do have to sign something.
You don't sign anything.
I do.
You, you sign the seeker and. You, you sign the seeker, and the clerk signs the resolution, but you guys don't sign anything.
Oh, okay.
Do you sign motions? Do you ever sign motions?
No, the resolution, the following resolution is voted on.
It's voted on, but in certified, as you see at the bottom, by the clerk.
The vote, we're showing a vote on it, it's it.
So, there's a motion to.
The language of, it is hereby resolved that this plan is adopted, that's in the resolution.
Right, but we don't have to say anything about it?
You're voting on the resolution.
Okay, so we vote to accept the resolution.
You vote to adopt the resolution, like you do with any other resolution.
Okay. Vote to adopt.
So you're saying.
Seeker, change, resolution.
That was my language, the first time I forgot.
But I'm saying you don't need the language, your motion was not, no, no one's motion was necessary because it, the resolution is the motion.
This is why it was categorized the way it was on the agenda, we have a bunch of resolutions, and then also a possible amendment here, we needed to deal with what we were going to do and how we were going to do it, and it was not clear at the time where we were exactly going with it as of, when this went on Friday. That's why it's labeled the way it is, and again, we worked on this to make sure that this was sufficient and accurate at the time of posting the agenda. So thankless, John.
So it's not something that one person brings up and someone else actually says?
Yes, it is, yes.
Okay.
Liz, look at the motion, look at the resolution, nope, not, not your motion, get off the motion, look at the resolution.
Liz, when I, when I.
Look at, what does it say, motion second, nope, flip, flip, stop, nope, look back, stop, stop, look, it says motion five, seconded by, doesn't it?
Christine, it's the sausage being made right in front of your eyes right now.
See, this day.
Second page, third page.
Second page.
I mean, yeah, you can put it down where it says voting, you can say motion and second, it's not written in there, yes, we can.
It's not.
Okay, so I will.
That's, that's what I was trying to get after, what statement we do.
There will be a motion to accept this resolution there, that you I assume will make, there will be a second that I assume Ben will make.
Do we accept it or adopt it?
Just follow our lead on this, and we're not trying to scare you wrong, your life is a plan approved tonight before midnight.
I will, I will read the resolution, and I will say.
You want to, you want, you want to amend, what do you want to amend?
I just, please.
Yes.
I'm not trying to be bossy.
Well, I got this here, that's why I got that.
Understand the proper process, that's all.
I read the resolution, and I say, is there a motion to adopt the resolution? Yes, is there a second? Yes, roll call. I don't do that part, he does that part, okay.
Well, she does, actually.
I don't care.
When do we, when do we maintain third? That's why I was just.
We gotta do seeker first, seeker changes resolution.
I, you did, I just want to make sure that that was the right order.
I, I think that we just accept it, then you don't have to read through the seeker.
Okay, so then let me do this.
Yes.
Let me do this.
Yes.
All the trustees, you have in front of you the part two of the seeker for the comprehensive plan, correct? And I have all of you had the opportunity to review the part two of the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Of, of part two of the seeker. And do you understand the answers that were put in by your consultants? Do you agree with the answers that were put in on part two by your consultants?
No impact on land, no impact on July.
You guys said I wasn't going to read it.
I know, it's just for him, so you can see it.
There's no impact on anything. Okay.
It's like we, we, you all see him, see it with me.
So does everyone accept that part two is filled out properly?
Yes.
Okay, go to part three, which is, you'll notice that part three has a narrative to it, does everyone, all the trustees have the opportunity to review the narrative? And does anybody have any concerns with respect to the five-page narrative? Which sets forth the, the fact there are no adverse impacts.
Yes, when I read it, I was like, what is this exactly? The whole.
It's what you're required to do.
So goes category by category, just reaffirms that there's no significant impact on those categories.
So is everybody, are all trustees fine with the narrative of part three?
Yes.
Is it the trustee's determination that the, there will be no significant environmental impact by the adoption of the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Yes, all right, so you have conditionally completed seeker right now. The next question I have to use, do you have changes to the actual comprehensive plan?
Yes.
There was a motion that Ben had, which had two different changes, two changes to it, I have no idea.
I have them in front of me.
Or do you want to just go to the one that John Cromer recommended ultimately? That's, that's the question ultimately.
I'm, I'm fine with that, I was thinking since we're making a change, otherwise I wouldn't have brought it up. I just, just for people's application, what we're talking about with the changes I suggested for the housing piece, I suggested for rationale, recognize opportunities to provide affordable housing in response to the ongoing affordable housing crisis, the increasing size of the elderly population, and their need for accessible housing, and the need for, and the need for migration due to climate change and other conditions. So I just bringing in some other very important factors into why we need to increase affordable housing, but we don't have to negotiate that if people aren't interested in dealing with that.
Would that be categorized as substantive?
They could be, that was the risk.
That was the risk.
Yeah, we sort of pre-vented what John suggested, moralized it.
Say that's not substantive.
What about the intro on?
The other one I suggested, again, I would think this is not substantive, but it was, and this is being done more and more, basically the sentence at the beginning of the history of Balsam Spa, because I noticed in the history of Balsam Spa, there was initially no mention of Native American people who are here before Balsam Spa. So the sentence I suggest is to begin, the people of Balsam Spa want to respectfully acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of the Mohawk people, with this land acknowledgement, we honor with gratitude this community. Now, I don't have to put that in, I actually asked the, the, the comprehensive planning committee to consider, so I didn't give them the language, but if you consider that, they did not put it in, they, I think they put in some reference to how the lands used to be hunted by, used for hunting grounds.
Chair, do you want to put us to wire, why not? If you might, I think to Ben's point, we did include language about this being a, an area that was used as a hunting ground by Mohawk, but not the specific land acknowledgement.
Right, so that's fine, I only brought it up because we are all already talking about edits, otherwise I wouldn't, you know, talk about.
So I chatted with Frank earlier about this, because like, I do support that statement, but like, if it's going to kick this back, I think there's other ways where we can acknowledge that, what was the, like, what were you saying, we could do potentially?
A resolution.
A resolution. No, but seriously, I do, I do support that statement, a lot of municipalities are acknowledging native lands, and, but I think Carla's email somewhere in the chain started with kick it back, or we require another.
Plus Mr. Behan said, well, maybe it's not just the Mohawk people.
True, maybe we need to do more research.
I didn't do the research, I just.
Yeah.
So, actually, I did do a little.
So next, but I, can I make a motion to make the following amendment to the draft comprehensive plan in section nine, changing the second sentence to re-recognize opportunities to be responsive to potential population increase from outside the region, period, and expunging the remainder of that sentence?
I'm fine with that.
I'll second.
So Ben makes the motion, Sean seconds it ultimately, because I'm not making that motion myself per se. Discussion? Let's do a roll call out of respect here.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Baskin?
Yes.
Trustee Van Denta?
Yes.
Trustee Cormos?
Yes.
Mayor Rossi?
Yes, and now it's time to actually solidify the actual votes on seeker and the, and the actual comprehensive plan, I believe, correct?
Yes, do you want me to read the entire resolution? I'm happy to do so. Or does somebody else want to read the resolution? It is. Two pages. I can read, why don't I do this, why don't I read the resolved paragraph? Okay, all right. Therefore, be it resolved that the village of Balsam Spa Village Board makes the following findings based upon the conclusions identified above. Number one, the adoption of comprehensive plan is not anticipated to have a significant adverse impact on the environment, including land and water resources, air quality, plants and animals, agricultural land resources, aesthetic, historic, and archaeological resources, open space and recreation resources, critical environmental areas, transportation, energy, noise, odor, public health, and growth in community character. Number two, the adoption of comprehensive plan will have a beneficial effect on transportation in the village by advocating for the policies and investments outlined and related, related village transportation plans. Number three, the adoption of the comprehensive plan as proposed would provide the best combination of appropriately scaled growth, community enhancement, and natural resource protection in accordance with the shared goals of the village residents. And be it further resolved, future land use, zoning, and related land use decisions considered for adoption by the village or other lead agencies shall be guided by the goals and land use recommendations set forth in the comprehensive plan. And be it further resolved that the village board acting as lead agency has examined the impacts which may be reasonably anticipated to result from the action, and has determined that it will not have any significant adverse impact on the environment as set forth in the full EA Act. And be it further resolved that the village board hereby issues this negative declaration and notice thereof pursuant to the requirements of seeker and its implementing regulations. And be it further resolved that the village board hereby authorizes the filing of this negative declaration and notice thereof pursuant to the requirements of seeker and six MICRR section six seventeen point twelve of its implementing regulations. And be it further resolved that the village of Balsam Spa hereby adopts the village of Balsam Spa comprehensive plan dated April eleventh, two thousand and, no, sixteen seventeen, two thousand and twenty-three pursuant to New York State village law, and shall file a copy of the comprehensive plan with the village clerk and the Saratoga County Planning Board. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Trustee Cormos, raise the motion.
I make the motion to adopt the resolution.
You just stop right there. Just, just make the motion.
Okay, I make the motion.
I will second that.
Trustee Raymond? Discussion?
Thank you to the comprehensive plan committee.
Yes, and roll call.
This is a real milestone for this village, because the last comprehensive plan was done twenty-six years ago, and we have a new comprehensive plan, which is going to guide us for the next five to ten years, and it's been a long road to get here, and I'm happy that we have reached this milestone.
Roll call.
Baskin?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Van Denta?
Yes.
Trustee Cormos?
Yes.
Mayor Rossi?
Yes, out of courtesy, your name is spelled S H A W N, right? We gotta fix Sean's name on that.
Okay.
I figured you did make that mistake, so, okay. But this is adopted, and we are done, and thank you again to our comprehensive planning committee. We do G, then K, and then we'll talk about HIJ. Can I get a motion to permit the purchase of one picnic table for an amount not to exceed one thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars twenty-nine cents? And to transfer any funds necessary to complete that purchase previously budgeted for multi-annuals to the degree that these funds are not already located in the correct budget line?
I'll make a motion, you, you didn't want to just use what was there.
Trustee Baskin? Trustee Van Denta, discussion. No, only because of the discussion earlier, this allows us to do a little bit more research on it and get it out there, so. Also, I can't, I didn't have time at all today to see where we had multi-annuals compared to where this would come out, so I don't know if it's the same line.
And we really didn't know if it needed a motion or not, or.
Yeah, that's why I kept it in case for this reason.
And also because it is a table in Whistula that doesn't exist, so that's a good thing to bring up to people and to discuss if there's any issues.
It's not any objection by me, I'm just saying, taking into, you know, what everybody was talking about earlier, yeah. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, let's see, I jump to K, and then we'll go back.
Should we do nine eleven at the same time?
Ah, yeah, okay, now I guess it makes sense, now to the side of it. Can I get a motion approving the emergency work performed by Hawk Drilling Company Incorporated out of Sian Succi Spring on Friday, August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, for the cost of three thousand one hundred fourteen dollars seventy-one cents? Trustee Van Denta? Trustee Cormos, discussion.
What's broken?
It wasn't pumping at all, we had to fix the pump, and.
It pumps water from where to where?
The Sian Succi water source up to basically the spring and through the midbury, it's essentially, so it was, for the midbury's sake, since they utilize some of that water, it was necessary as well.
Do we charge them for that water?
We don't, because it's not technically produced water per se in that manner, so we don't need it.
Does other people have, do we have public access to that water?
I don't know how it exactly works, I'm not trying to rewrite history of this minute on that one, I just know what I'm told with respect to it, and it's probably something to take a look at on another day for sure. For now, we gotta fix this.
Yeah, no, I know we have to fix it.
Well, it's fixed, thankfully, thanks to Hawk Drilling for kind of dropping everything here so that it was working, especially out of busy weekend like this weekend was.
And it was an emergency because.
It was necessary for running of it and for business use and anything else.
For the midbury, it was an emergency for that?
Well, partially, yeah, but.
For any other reason, or just that, wondering, how is it used?
It's one of our landmark scenarios that goes through Whistula Park. Yes, Denver.
The midbury offers mineral box, that's their water.
Or a charge, it's a private profit.
But they had to camp, I mean, they had to shut down business on.
That's, that was my question, is it an emergency beyond the midbury? Or is it an emergency for them?
It was an emergency for one of our businesses.
Right.
So to carry. Yeah, and since it was six hundred feet down, we needed help.
I, I, we just need to point out, where if we're using public funds for a private purpose, that needs to be acknowledged.
It's not entirely a private purpose, as I said, one of our landmarks is the ability, we must talk about Whistula Park water spring.
That's the same water.
Supplies the spring was.
Yes, yes.
That was my, that was where I was.
I'm trying to say that, come on, give me some credit, I'm trying to say that.
That's not quite an emergency, but.
Yeah, no, I mean.
It's public at least.
Yeah, I think we ought to discuss whether we should, as we do for all other water, charge for it.
Well, that's a, that's a separate discussion from what was just going on this side of the table. All in favor of approving that emergency work motion?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion permitting the nine eleven ceremony to occur next to sixty-six Front Street and along the sidewalk, and allowing closure of the road of Front Street from Bat Street to Science Street from six thirty PM to eight thirty PM on September eleventh, twenty twenty-three? Trustee Van Denta? Trustee Baskin, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, time for more fun here on mixed motions. HIJ, okay, so as discussed earlier, there was not a consensus reached with respect to ethics, and so kind of fast play going on last week where we had a lot of emails, and I don't even know, it happens sometimes, what's in this thing as a result of it, there were questions going until Friday, I think, with some of this, and now later. The attorney had, her name's Carla, last I checked, had suggested, this is probably a perfect time for a workshop to get everybody involved there, so that we don't have to make changes to it after a public hearing occurs that are substantive, if we can avoid it, and therefore delay it and have to do multiple public hearings ultimately if it needs to happen. That's the risk you run when you don't have a consensus and you don't workshop it ultimately to get to some kind of consensus like that. So that's why she had, I think, recommended that approach, so that's why H makes sense as the first approach, and if H fails, then we talk about I and J at that point, which would be the scheduling of a public hearing at the next meeting. Everybody with me on that? I see the reason we've, you know, layered them that way, hey, look, like you're.
I just don't think it's necessary to have a workshop, it's, it's pretty much close to the finish line, anything we need to wrap up, we can do before the public hearings, so.
No, after the public hearings.
Well, whatever, you know, we can have a conversation and collaborate, so that if there is some sort of meeting of the minds, we, we can make that available during the public hearing.
I just want to make it, make it clear to you, though, because Ben was still talking about changes. about changes going into the weekend, if I remember correctly. And once we set this public hearing and put notice out for it, we cannot make changes to this until after the public hearing is completed. If we make substantive changes at that time, we have to go back to start, reset another public hearing, and then rinse and repeat until we reach a point where no substantive changes are being made. It actually, you're risking this taking longer, the way you're suggesting, than with workshop to at least get out the worst of substantive issues that might still exist. I just want to be honest with you, full disclosure of that.
I...
Should we do the motion and then get to discussion and do it then?
Well, we're trying to make sure, again, I'm not trying to push HI or J as a first thing, as you accused me of earlier, I'm trying to help everybody understand why HI and J appeared here this way after all the eighty-two emails on this last week. And sort of see where we're going to go with it in open session. Not the cleanest way of doing it, but it's about the only thing that's left to do with the way the emails fell on this last week, sorry to tell you.
Okay, I concur with Sean. Actually, I think I remember we offering a workshop and you declining it.
No, we just had this discussion a little while ago.
Okay, doesn't matter. Anyways, I think the, the two versions are quite similar. They, I don't think there was much modification of the body that the committee put together, but we added some additional clauses, you know, on disclosure, on, on penalties, et cetera, which I think strengthened, strengthened the ethics code, because I actually did aside, you know, Microsoft Word allows you to take two documents and compare them. There was some sort of grammatical and word changes and definitions, but otherwise, they really, the version that, that Ben has presented actually strengthens, doesn't negate anything that the committee did.
Okay, but not for nothing, I sent an email, if you remember, I think, also, you were commenting on this, an email about things that I think are missing from it. If we're going to put our two cents into this code, then we all get two cents in this code. Either we all get a chance to talk here or we, none of us...
Well, yeah, we've had over a year to do this. Now, now is not the time for you to say go.
Really, because you're making changes right now, so...
I'm not making changes right now.
Yeah, you, well, yes, last week, yeah, there were changes being made, that's how we ended up with this.
Well, it's time to close this.
Liz, it's always time to close the discussion when Liz feels like it's time to close the discussion. Well, again, it's a village matter ultimately. And so, no, excuse me.
Let's take the vote.
Excuse me, no.
There's my motion.
So first things first. As I said... Thank you. So I asked about a couple different issues, where they were, could somebody spot where they're covered in the revisions that Ben made? None of you have answered those questions. And these are things, these are things that I think are very valid questions or issues ultimately. And I was ignored, basically, so, you know, this whole thing that I ignore you, I got it, no, no, no. Basically, because you wield the majority, you feel, you can just ignore the relevant issues.
We're not ignoring, we're trying to follow the agenda and...
No, 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 Ben, Ben, I think, I remember the Democrats page at one point really getting on me about the idea that...
Let's take the vote.
No, excuse me, excuse me. That the Democrats page was always on me about the idea that I don't, you know, respond to emails or don't respond to questions or issues, et cetera. I know I'm right, Ellie. I, I, I read it, I take criticism from all sides, don't you worry, I do. So...
I can guarantee it.
Yeah, she does. I, listen...
Don't bring the Democrats, let's get business done.
Frank, could we get back to the topic at hand?
Liz, you're not recognized, I'm talking. Thank you. Sorry. So where are the answers to my questions ultimately about where things were, like the trustees lying to basically exact vendettas on other people? Where, where is that? Go back to my email then.
I don't think I saw it. When would you send the email?
I sent an email late at night, just like you do.
When? What day?
Thursday or Wednesday, I believe. Here, you want me to read it?
I don't remember, maybe you read it.
Frank, you accused me of lying, which is untrue.
I, we...
And you brought up a topic that has nothing to do with the ethics code.
Well, a lot of things in this ethics code, as revised, technically don't have anything to do with an ethics code, okay? So I'm not sure where you're getting on that one, but...
See if I can find it.
I call for a vote.
On what? There's nothing.
Frank, you're motioning. We can't just have you just talk indefinitely about nothing. I mean, have a, have the motion and then we discuss it and then there's a process for moving forward, otherwise we're just spinning our wheels. Bernadette keeps saying there's no motion, that, well, let's make the motion and then we move forward, we discuss it and we move forward, otherwise we're just talking, we're not going anywhere. I have plenty to say, but I'd like to do it at the proper time. So this, this is when we would make a motion for your...
Excuse me, I just found it.
For your workshop.
Okay. I'll read you the email from E twenty-three twenty-three, which is what day, Wednesday night. And I have a concern here, we now have multiple versions of ethics laws and nobody seems to know which is the correct version. It sounds familiar with the way I label things today. One person is acting like they're the keeper of the ethics code, you, and the same thing that happened to the prior sidewalk code is happening to the ethics code. You're using the wrong versions and ending up convoluted the process instead of assisting it. Additionally, we appear to have an incompatibility in the code. We solved this question, but related to the use of, use and definition of officers when compared to other aspects of the code, we actually, Carla and I walked through that and it's, we're okay there. While I appreciate...
Yes.
She's, yeah, she was right, I get with her. While I appreciate your attempt to form cram down before an election, I believe your efforts need to slow down and appreciate that these same mess ups created a waste of resources once already. I can only imagine how much time Carla wasted that day finding eighty versions of this code and trying to settle them. But again, the attempt to create traps of political minefields in the ethics code is exactly why trustees shouldn't be handling it in the manner you are. Flat out, both Democrats and Republicans on the Ethics Rewrite Advisory Committee have urged you not to take this course. I'd like to hear your rationale at this point for conducting yourself in this manner. We've been ready to approve, in an improvement of the ethics code for over a year, while you've sat there undermining others' work endlessly, this isn't okay, and I'd like to understand why you think it is. Liz, I'd like to understand your last comments concerning me complying with disclosures that I've never refused to comply with, and why you thought this statement was appropriate. I'd also like to understand why you feel it is okay to lie to the building inspector, code enforcement officer about your own personal vendetta against my family, that you tried without success to get the museum to back up recently. It's not funny, Ben.
It's true.
Please point to where in Ben's revised code this would be a violation, since I believe we can all agree that lying to a code enforcement officer by a trustee probably should be covered in an ethics code. Furthermore, Liz, I'd like to know where in Ben's revised code a trustee overstepping their bounds by acting in a manner of enforcing code is handled. I'm aware of you doing so on Front Street recently, and while you later apologized for it, it should never have happened in the first place and could have led to a lawsuit against the village if you continued that approach. Again, this should be outlined somewhere, I would hope we all agree. In addition, please point out where trustees directing staff is covered in Ben's revised code. Lord knows if you think not following a board-approved procedure to the letter of the law is an ethics violation, improperly placing demands on staff should be equally qualified. We struggle these questions, in my insistence that disclosure, trustee perform, then perhaps you should take a step back and understand these are exactly the things, Ben, and you have a ton to do toward me in this ethics code, except you apparently didn't realize I have zero to hide. So before you waste your time, more in, more resources of the village on doing something based on personal vendettas, trustees, please answer the above out of courtesy. Thanks, I received no responses.
So the thing to point out there is you are not providing specific language to add to the ethics code. So that's where we are now, we need, if you want to add something to the ethics code that...
I think I listed them there, didn't I?
You didn't give us the language that you wanted.
I, I'm asking, I'm asking if it's covered in your, in your mind, are the things I spotlighted there covered?
Can I just interject really quickly? The original ethics code that was written by the board, did it have what you're asking for?
Well, I'm going to go back to what I said a couple minutes ago. So I'm going to go back to what I, you asked a question, let me answer a question.
This, this is...
Let me answer this question. And it's not... No, no. It's on what? It's either all or nothing.
There's a motion here, motion A.
But folks, either we're going to...
Are you going to make a motion, Frank?
I don't make motions, Liz, I call for motions.
Call your motion then.
Well, we should just stop talking, just let it still run out of steam eventually, and then we'll have to do the motion.
You want respect and you show zero.
I have respect for the, the integrity of this meeting, and Frank, I feel like you...
About twenty-five minutes ago, that sure didn't show, so let's, let's...
You, you do not, you are, you are nowhere on this agenda now, right now. You need to get back to the agenda.
Excuse me, I am fully on this agenda. HI and J and a footnote to explaining it and why we're here.
There's not even a motion before us at this point.
Correct, so...
So there should be.
So my...
Before we discuss something.
Thank you, Ben.
So which motion are we talking about?
Yeah, which one?
I don't know.
One motion.
You don't know.
Pick one motion for us to talk.
And make it.
Yeah, make it. Present the motion and then we'll discuss it. That's the normal way to do things.
Well, I think the problem is that it informs...
Oh my God.
She can't prevent Bernadette talking.
I think the problem here, and I know you guys don't like it right now, is that all of this informs all three of them. I don't, you know, it's worthy, it's worth having this conversation. So I think Frank is correct to raise some concerns and I appreciate that you guys want to add some, some, you know, teeth to, to this, but obviously, we're spending a lot of time on this right now that could be handled in a special meeting. And again, I would just encourage all of us to like talk, there's a lot of yelling now and talking over each other and it's kind of just a little much. So...
That's what you said, so, I, again, I, I hear you, but it's kind of complicated, so I think in this case, we have to talk, you know?
My thought about the public hearing, not that we're talking about that...
Public hearing or workshop, just to be clear, okay?
Is I had, many months ago, repeatedly, I asked for a workshop on the ethics law. I asked maybe three times at least.
We got scheduled.
And the best I could do was to get a workshop that combined the sidewalk and the ethics law together. I told you at all at the time, that's not going to work. We're, it's not going to be long enough workshop, we're going to run out of steam, and I was absolutely correct. We did not have time to get to the ethics law. And it was never scheduled after that, despite me requesting repeatedly. At this point, I feel that we're just playing a game and delaying, and that there's been plenty of time for everyone to provide feedback, there's been opportunity to have a workshop prior to this, and at this point in time, we, I just want to move forward. That time's passed.
So I'd like to bring, sorry.
Go ahead.
Just so the public is aware, wow, there are so much moving parts in the background as far as code and changes, so I think, again, we agreed to a workshop, I think, I, I think I couldn't be at that, was that when it was?
It was Holy Thursday was the one that was the dual one, and because it was Easter time, I think we had trouble exactly spotting where to reschedule it at that time.
So, you know, it's worthy to reschedule it. I, I think that there has been, again, so many code changes and law changes that, you know, things get not right, it's not right, but I think it has been, you know, under shuffle of things and activity going on. So I, I really, you know, it, it can't hurt, and I think, you know, I appreciate that you, you wanted one in the first place, I agree, I think we needed one. So I really see no harm in having this and encourage you that, like, we can all come together and feel good about this, that, you know, ultimately, I really just wanted to adopt what the, you know, the, the board that developed, the ethics board that worked on it, you know, and have something in place and then, you know, if we needed to add refinements, but since we are already neck deep in revisions, that like we should get it right. And so, and I think that can really only happen in some discussion, and emails are not working, guys, like for the public's sake, so you have full disclosure. There are genuinely about fifty emails in one chain, and then it gets into another chain. So I think conversations aren't happening effectively, and that's why I think a public, you know, workshop does make sense, so.
In this chain specifically, it was a lot of Carla trying to say, what version are we on and what is going on here with a lot of this as well? And so that was a lot of confusion for last week, and again, another reason why on Friday I was like, I don't know what we're doing with this, I really don't.
I was very clear, there was a version that I presented and I said, that's the version
But then you were talking about making changes to that version.
I was giving you yet more opportunity to provide feedback prior to this meeting.
Your change, you were saying you had more changes, Ben. Again, and I just want to again say, if you make changes after a scheduling of a public hearing and a notice of a public hearing, those substantive changes will start you back to the beginning.
I know, that's why if they were going to be changed, I would, I ask for them for this meeting if, prior to this.
But I asked...
I think it's time to...
I asked questions specifically to whether or not you felt your code version covered what I presented. I'm still waiting for answers, and I, I put out a reminder email on Thursday when I still had no answers, or Friday, I think it was actually, and I said, if I don't get answers to these, then I, the only thing, choice I have is to move the original version of code.
But your, your original version doesn't cover your concerns.
Because, again, as I said to you earlier, Ben, either we are going to not involve ourselves at all in writing these rules, or we're going to involve ourselves completely in rewriting these rules.
Frank, all we're trying to do is schedule a public hearing and let the public comment. And then after that public hearing is closed, if there are things like was brought up for the comp plan, we will make those changes and then we will vote on it.
No, you won't.
We can make changes after the public hearing.
No, you can... Not, you cannot make substantive changes at hearing, we have been through this.
Then you hold another public hearing, it's substantive changes. You can make changes after. Why do you have a public hearing if you can't make changes based on what the public says? That makes absolutely no sense whatsoever.
Carla, would you like to take a stab, telling her how the law reads?
Can you make changes based on what the public tells you in a public hearing?
You can make minor changes, you cannot make substantive changes. Making substantive changes changes the law, so you have to go back and schedule another public hearing on the new law.
Okay, so we do that if that comes to be.
But don't you... See how having the workshop can save that step of having something so drastically different? So that, that's, that's what I'm... Hearing, it's, I know it's not what you wanted to, but I see it as a process, so...
If I thought you guys were negotiating in good faith, I'd be more open to it, but because you were given such an opportunity for a workshop for many, many months and you didn't...
That's an unfair statement, so...
You were named to delay it, that's all I do.
And also, I, I didn't see any initiation by either Frank or my dad in months and months.
Because we're dealing with the emails on every other issue under the sun. So, I mean, it's, it's so...
They all full-blown.
Okay. But, hold on here.
It doesn't have to be Ben or Liz, it always has... It was one that brought up code updates, was I not, folks that were here, and listed out everything with, you have some... I think of that one, Alex is here, and listed out where we were on everything. I was actually one doing the summation on that, guessing where things are going. I said regarding ethics, it seems like nobody's moving on it at this point. Now, it would have been proper to say, hey Frank, what should we do next? Or do you want to go to a workshop next? If that was the idea, and then we could have skipped this problem. Instead, we got thrown new changes to the code from last week, Ben, you added... Two changes at that point, and you know you did. He essentially would be an ethics violation, which is not true, there's other laws that There's other laws that handle that ultimately.
When I, when I said that you and your staff need. Follow legal motions by the board, you said that's not in the law, that was your response, it's not the law.
No, that, what you said was that you could usurp the executive power and direct. It was, that was.
Yeah, and, and, and is authoritative over you and.
No, no, you specifically. Said, Ben, that if I fail to directly usurp the power of the executive and direct them, yes, it was.
That's that, if there's a motion that we pass. Pass, that staff are obligated to pass, so for. Example, we've passed the motion.
You changed the committee rules after that motion was approved. Yes, you did.
It's always been.
Yeah, yeah. I went back to it, Ben, I told you flat out what happened.
Is there any reason to be afraid following policy that is voted on? Is there any individual here on the board that would be afraid that if it was in the ethics, that when there's a motion, you need, you need to follow the spirit of the motion in good faith? Well, is it illegal?
Ethics is not about legality, it's about the dos and don'ts generally. It's not an illegality, it's not, it's not an illegality issue. It's about conflicts of interest and improper attachments and things like that. That's what ethics are.
Charge for that, it's charged, I had absolutely nothing to do with that.
Well, then, then in that, you could speculate that if you don't follow a motion, it's because of a conflict of interest.
What? I, I am not even following what any of you guys are saying. It's so convoluted right now at this point, so.
This is what happens.
Can I get a motion that a special meeting of the board of trustees be held on Tuesday, 9/19/2023 at 7:00 PM in the Village Office's building, 666 Prun Street, for the purpose of a workshop related to the draft ethics code?
I like the motion.
I'll second it, discussion.
We desperately need a workshop, guys, whether you think it or not.
After hearing that last exchange, I concur 90,000%.
Well, you know what, you had your opportunity many times over many months.
Really, you couldn't answer a simple email last week? You couldn't answer a simple email last week?
That was not a simple email.
It wasn't?
If you wanted a workshop, you could have had a couple workshops by now. You're just delaying and playing games, that's what you're doing.
Ben, it was.
By not having a workshop.
I wanted one, until now. I don't believe you guys want to negotiate in good faith. I think you are just playing.
Vote, vote, call, vote!
No, I'm not done, I'm sorry, this is, this is, this is discussion. So Ben, you keep saying that, I honestly, dude, I, I really, I like working with you and I try. And there are times we can come together and I feel like, right now, we're not, which is obvious. But we are not on the same page on this. And it would be better for all of us to get together, work it out and, you know, have something, again, I said this earlier, that we can all, you know, at least feel somewhat good about, right? And for you to say that we're not here negotiating in good faith, that we won't do that, that's not, that's just untrue. And, you know, I, I think at all times, all of us have had some disagreeing viewpoint, but it doesn't mean that people aren't here trying to do the right thing for this community. So it's just like, just an unnecessary comment that just, it, it just adds to the vitriol in this board. And I'm disappointed, I don't know, it's just unbelievable. But again, I would really like for us to come together, try to work on this, you know, can we please put aside our, you know, personal feelings and, you know, we're going to disagree, but we got to put aside our personal feelings and stuff. And I really encourage you guys to vote yes on this. It's just the right thing to do. So and whether it happened when you wanted it to, I don't know, I apologize, I wish it could have happened earlier. But we're asking for it now and I don't see why you couldn't be open to that.
Well, just to be specific, again, it was our attorney's idea last week when we were trying to figure out what to do with this, that we are in need of a workshop. She too was struggling with some of where this was going and coming from too. And if our attorney is having trouble with it, then seriously, it was the best indicator to me, a workshop is absolutely still necessary. But what do I know?
Welcome.
Trustee Baskin?
No.
Trustee Raymond?
No.
Trustee Vandezza?
Yes.
Trustee Cormos?
No.
Mayor Rossi?
Yes. Hey, Ben, pick your motion.
Pick your motion.
All right. We'll do the motion for the ethics code I submitted. You want to read it?
It's all you, go for it.
Motion made by Trustee Baskins, seconded by.
No, it's not, that's not how it works.
Motion made that a public hearing on revised ethics law attached, I guess, copy E, is that correct? Be set for the September 12th meeting of the Board of Trustees at 7:01 PM. Do I, who wants to make the motion?
You can make the motion, but you just couldn't read it that way.
Okay, all right, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Discussion.
I'll just share, as requested, some of the enhancements to this ethics law that we put in.
Why don't you save it for the public hearing intro? If that's.
What?
Save it for the public hearing intro at that point. We'll have a public hearing on the next meeting if you vote yes on this. And that's where you would do a presentation at that point outlining why you'd want this to be the law. That's how this usually works.
There's another motion on here, so he's explaining what's the difference.
Liz, we approve this motion, I'm not going back to eye, I'm not wasting this village's time, we've already wasted tonight, okay?
We haven't approved this motion yet.
Well, Ben, you know you're voting yes on it, so save, save it for the private to the public hearing.
There's the discussion moment, I'll just quickly say what some of the differences are, it won't take very long. So you, there are some additional conflicts of interest for additional family members, including grandchildren, uncle, aunt, nephew, niece, first cousin, as is included in Coho's and Rensseler Code of Ethics. There is, we include appointees, so advisory committee appointees for some provisions. Interestingly enough, there was a committee on the arts appointee who actually was convicted, so to speak, under, found guilty of an ethics violation under this law, even though it doesn't apply to appointees currently. So that was, needs to be addressed. Have a, something on the importance of adhering to approved motions and laws and not interfering with the ability of other officials and officers to fulfill their duties, which we've experienced here. We have an annual financial disclosure statement, as we've mentioned, that has not been, was not included originally. We, and we, as Jared referenced, we separated out enforcement action by, for employees and officers to make it clear what would, could happen with each, so.
So out of courtesy for people that are going to sign up for this act, the zoning advisory committee, shouldn't you be putting these forward so they have some advisement as to what you're going to be requiring of them upfront?
The disclosure form just for officers and employees, not the applicants, not the appointees.
But you listed things with respect to entanglements and issues related to all appointees. So what exactly are those and shouldn't they be notified upfront of what those are so you're not wasting picks and time?
There's nothing wrong with all, all appointees should potentially read the draft. Obviously, it's not in effect until it becomes law, but.
Why?
Yes, I will, I will, we can, you can send it out to people if you want to.
Well, I think if you, you're really obligated here, before you waste people's time, if this is going to become some level of a law, do you inform them upfront? Why would you waste your time?
Inform them of what?
The requirements.
Yeah, that's what, that's what this board meeting is for and.
With the scheduling of a public hearing, you're going to put this version on the web, anybody can look at it.
And that's, that's great, but you're basically, we basically say, hey, fill out this committee interest form. And we don't put anything related to, hey, these are going to be the new requirements on your existence on a committee.
Because we didn't know them yet, because we haven't passed this yet.
Right.
We're jumping the gun.
We tried to make them pretty basic, nothing, no like paperwork kinds of stuff. So it's just your basic, if you have a conflict, you have to accuse yourself. It's something that the ethics committee, again, already pursued with a committee on the arts person. So it's already apparently the understanding that they apply to this and we're just making it explicit.
Can I add something and request that if we're moving forward with this for the public hearing, that we have the original version done by the ethics board posted? And this version with the areas, the differences, the changes, the additions highlighted?
I think that we confuse the hell out of people at this point.
No, that probably is not a good idea, just put.
Well, we could.
Listen, Liz and I agreed on something, just go with it.
I agree, I mean. I, I have a copy where I took the original one and this one, like latest one that Ben did.
It's a lot of blue and red.
It's a lot of, but most of it is text stuff, you know, we, I didn't see lying in there at all. How come lying's not listed? Lying is not an ethics violation.
Are we in public comment right now? Yeah, we're not in public comment, I'm just searching for something over here, so.
I'll ask you, how come lying's listed?
This is the board's business.
I asked him, you just showed it to me.
Actually, it's your business, Jared, because if it passes, you're on this committee as a selection, it's going to affect you and everybody here. It is, so it is your business, so. I understand, it's the board's business. It's, and it's your business too, Jared, so just so you know, it is everybody's business here.
There's nothing to be afraid of, lady.
Yep, so, okay. Nonetheless, we'll be posting the one that's going to be up for public hearing, obviously, at that point in time. And at that point, changes are locked out, be aware.
And we've all had an opportunity to provide language.
No, you haven't.
Months.
No, we haven't, because you didn't answer my questions from last week, asked three times.
You had the opportunity to put your language in and you didn't.
Ben, then I would like to amend your motion to insert language pertaining to lying by trustees.
Lying?
Fine, I don't care, that's fine. We know if we lie, what? What's the language, Frank?
Please provide a definition of a lie.
A mistruth.
Please provide a definition of a mistruth. That is totally subjective and therefore shouldn't be in a, in a code.
You can't prove somebody's lying.
So you accept, you accept that amendment?
Well, what's the, what's the.
Well, we'll have to come up with it, but that's what I'm asking for to be included in it. If it's not included already, where is it?
Yeah, no, just as it stands, let's hold on.
Liz, you didn't second it, you didn't make it. So the people that I'm proposing amendment to are the first and the second, Ben and Sean. So Ben.
I need to hear your language.
The language would be added to ensure that a, a board of trustees member or an officer, we'll say generally, that is caught lying to other public officials is in violation of the ethics code. All right, okay, bye, bye.
Again, you're, you're slippery slope here because a public officer may have been misinformed by another individual and then it's being interpreted as a lie.
Intentional, we're just like, we're intentional?
Yeah.
But let's say, put it in the positive, officials are obligated to, to tell the truth to other officials and the public.
That sounds good.
All right, let's do that.
We should be doing that.
Yeah, I mean, isn't that in state law?
Where are you putting it?
I, I, I don't know, you know, I wrote this thing, I don't even know where to start to put anything at this point.
Put it in right where I, I had the whole, you have to follow the motions thing.
The one that I didn't want to.
Yeah, the one that's unorthodox.
No, the one that I think is proper.
Yeah, it's not ethics code, but.
Carla, do you have an opinion on this?
I have lots of opinions, but you told me today, you didn't want to listen to my opinions.
No, I did not, I said, we.
Yeah, yeah, you actually did.
You did this, you said you, that on something different, but you said you didn't want to hear, we.
No, I did not.
Appreciate your opinion, but this is not a legal opinion.
And did I say?
All right, let's get back to the topic.
No, I'm responding to this.
I know, I know.
Okay, I didn't say we disregard your, or dismiss your opinion. I said, you, you have an opinion, but if it's not, if it's a legal opinion, it has more weight because you're a lawyer. Otherwise, it's one more opinion.
Based on my job as a municipal attorney, but I'll ignore that for right now, because, well, only because, no, and to your point, Liz, though, to your point, on, last week, I did go through this code that Ben put together twice. I went through it once and made comments, Ben accepted some and rejected some. And so I, I went back the second time and explained why I still believed what I believed in those different things. And I don't want the public to have to hear all of the changes that I wanted to make in here and my concerns. And then it just stopped. So yes, those are my concerns, they're written in there and, and, yeah, so those are my concerns. I don't know what else you want me to say.
Where are the elected officials?
So you just said that you don't want, you don't care about it.
No, I did not say that.
Where are the elected officials just disregarding her professional opinion?
It's treating her opinion as a consultant's opinion. I'm a consultant, I give my opinion to a client, they don't have to take it.
No, Liz is absolutely right, they do not have to take my opinion. And I have many, many boards that I, my job is to give the advice, my job is not to make them take the advice, my job is to protect the village by the advice I'm giving. I do, I cannot force people, I can't force private clients to take advice. Life would be so much easier if I could. But I cannot do that. So yes, Liz, to your point, I do have concerns that there are parts in here that are improper and should not be within an ethics code because they're not ethical violations. They are dealt with through CPLR Article 78, labor law, civil service law, things of that nature. And I have that in there, but they were disregarded and it's fine, it is fine.
The idea.
It is your, as you say, is your, your code.
The idea was if you file an Article 78, that's expensive, that's filing a lawsuit. The idea is to put it also in the ethics to bring it to attention because not everyone can afford to hire lawyers and do an Article 78.
It has no force in effect at the end of the day because you have an alternative mechanism.
What it does.
It's a CPLR 78, as you just said, that's the only real force in effect.
The whole ethics code, the whole ethics thing has no enforcement behind it, really.
Yeah.
Well, for some, but not for us. In other words, we're elected officials and it's amazing what elected officials can get away with, as we've probably seen.
Living proof, right there.
Votes.
No.
There it is.
Votes.
So because you're elected, the only thing that the people can do is at the voting booth.
Yeah.
There are things that are.
Okay, so our attorney made, you asked the question, did our attorney have concerns? She answered yes, much like I had provided concerns or questions and they were basically discarded along the way and now we're all coming to meetings.
Excuse me, I was asking about the last topic, about putting in something about people lying, was.
That wasn't actually what we laid it on.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
That's what I meant, that, that was my question. Do you think that putting that in the ethics code or is that covered already in public officer's laws or whatever?
I have no idea if it's in public officer's law, I just presume most people tell the truth.
Let's just put it in the code, I don't.
I do, I mean, I think that's what the law does, the law, I mean, otherwise.
Just put it in, Liz, I mean.
I don't care.
Public officers must tell the truth to, of their officers in the public.
And, and then if you think they're not telling the truth, do you have to have proof?
Look, the way it's going to work is.
That's what I mean, somebody, I could say, oh, she lied, and I have no proof.
The, the way it's always going to work with all these things is someone bothers to make a complaint to ethics board. So first of all, it has to be something that's like a pattern or super egregious for anyone to even notice. And then the ethics board is going to, going to do their due diligence and deliberate and figure that out. And at the end of the day, if they think someone has violated the ethics code, I think so, all they can say is you violated the ethics code. And that's, then, so don't do that again. I mean, it's, it's, it's the court of public opinion, it's not like someone's going to jail here.
Right.
And so I'm fine saying, yeah, public officials should always tell the truth. I mean, that, that's, I have no problem.
Go ahead.
It's, put it in the unorthodox section.
Oh, that's how it all came up, oh, that's the resource section, yeah. Thank you for pointing out areas that we should cover.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of suggestions I did take, some, you know, we have an unusual situation here and.
No, you don't actually, Ben, you, you've got unfortunately a very important situation here and it's unusual, okay? Day to day, I'm tasked with doing a lot of things and not worrying about your section 17 of your ethics code telling me that we didn't necessarily meet the exact demands or expectations for code three times amended ultimately, or rule three times amended. We're trying to get things done for the village day to day and I take real offense at a certain point here that we're failing at that because look around you and look at our community and we're doing okay right now. We're trying to fix the things that need to be fixed, absolutely, but we're doing what we can day to day in spite of a lot of these, where really meaningless fights at the heart of it and get work done day to day. That's what your staff does, Terry, Jennifer, Melissa, Amanda, Tricia, and all of our DPW and all of our police and all of our library staff. And this stuff at the end of the day is minutia that I'm glad that we can all look past because it's really static, that just, it's the way of making a village work instead of making a village work. It is, so.
So I have, I, to that section 2717, I added, see, all public officials shall be truthful in all of their dealings, discussions and decisions relating to the village.
Beautiful.
You like my alliteration there? Fine, that's a three hour meeting alliteration.
Roll's tripping right off.
All right, so where are we?
You first have to accept it on both the first and second.
I accept.
Yeah, where did you place it?
2717C. Twenty seven seventeen C.
Roco.
Trustee Baskin?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Fandanza?
Yes, but please make sure in the minutes it's reflected that I still think this needs more work. I don't think this is necessarily the the right document to present to the public, but I do support the public hearing part of it.
Trustee Cormills?
Yes.
May Rosi?
Abstain because the board of trustees should not actually be doing what we're doing with respect to this code. Don't write code about yourself.
But how does abstain differ than no than voting no?
It's no for the count. It's show on a minutiae as to the understanding that we should not be putting ourselves into this role. We shouldn't.
The role of of voting on a public hearing?
On this version of it ultimately, no. This is trustee created. I I just added an amendment. I shouldn't even be doing that. None of us should. But again, if one of us is gonna, we all should be doing it at that point, okay? Not one person should be weaponizing an ethics code on this floor. It should be all of us if we're gonna play that game.
I talked to a lot of other municipalities and their boards all pass their ethics codes. Most of them wrote it themselves. Most of them didn't have a committee write it.
That's why politicians.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other business?
Yes.
It's not ready, Liz. It's not ready.
Excuse me, I put a motion forth on Thursday morning on time. I'd like to ask Carla's reading on our rules and procedure, which says that every board member has the right to put a motion on the agenda. Is that not correct?
Liz.
I don't know. I don't have it up. I'm pulling it up right now.
And furthermore, Liz, it wasn't a question of that. We'd unintentionally omitted it on Friday. That was unintentional. And then and then, excuse me, and then we've tried to tell you all weekend in emails, et cetera, and into today. It is not ready for prime time. It is not. And so Sean actually had an interesting idea.
That's that's your opinion.
No, it's not. It's not actually just opinion.
I put a motion for Thursday morning in the prescribed times.
Your RFP, Liz.
But that's what a motion for. You bring it forward and you discuss it. And then the group says.
This is working so well tonight, isn't it?
And the group decides, is it is it a yes or a no for what?
Yeah.
We don't cut short the the conversation discussion.
You have absolutely no right to withdraw, to 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 keep my motion from.
Okay, so I'm gonna embarrass you publicly now. Let's go. Seriously, there's no need to do this to you. We could be fixing it.
Frank, you have already done quite a bit.
Use the microphone.
Hold on, everyone.
So, you know, my skin's pretty tough now. There's nothing.
That's great.
Liz, use the mic.
Well, hold on, actually. I was gonna speak until they went back and forth.
You have questions?
I can answer the question.
I'll answer just to make sure that I.
The answer is yes.
Yeah. And so so what I was gonna say is first off, thank you for compiling. There was a lot of different sources that you put that information, pulled that information from to put RFP. But because I think there were so many sources, there's like a lot of inconsistencies. The the actual formatting, there's inconsistencies. It it needs a thorough proof and edit, which I did. I'm happy to give to you. I think I think it needs another look. And, you know, I'm looking forward to voting on it, but I don't think we can do that today. And two, I think you are gonna start going, sorry, frankly, before I jumped in. I think Sean has a a solution possibly where we can kind of move forward together on this. But I I just don't think it was ready for today. That's all.
So.
Not that I don't thank you for doing it, okay?
So not to put words in your mouth, but basically you were saying you saw the feedback today that it's way too specific in terms of tasks and that the idea is to let the consultant provide us a game plan as to how they would move forward to redo our, this is regarding the RFP regarding the redoing of the zoning code and zoning map is still what the topic is for those that we didn't explain this to in this process. So the idea was that it shouldn't be very, very specific. It should be somewhat loose to allow the consultant to tell us how they move forward. We would require public input, committee discussions, working with the ZAC, et cetera. Do you guys mind if I use that as the acronym?
Zoning.
Advisory Committee, the ZAC. You didn't know what the ZAC was? Sorry, ZAC Morris. So, and we also had this interesting thing where we put in not to exceed bid price in it, which I suggested maybe we shouldn't do that because you're gonna end up with five proposals, these proposals that are all at the eighty five thousand dollar level or whatever ends up being. And so let them tell us what the cost is, and that way we'll be able to make that as part of the competitive process ultimately. As Bernadette said, I literally spent one hour yesterday on two pages of editing. I had to teach today. I had to do the meeting with Mayor Kim and his crew today. I didn't have the time to invest this weekend or today into doing a full nine hours and trying to rewrite this thing. Bernie, that took most of her day to try to rewrite it because of the issues that she spotted, and I am even tempered over mine. Carla had the suggestion of same person, I'm assuming that you had gotten the advice from about the zoning committee to show him the RFP since he's not gonna be a proposal for the RFP and get his point of view because he's a seasoned professional in this realm. And let us know, hey, maybe it's good, maybe it's not. But we have some concerns that this thing is not going to produce proposals because it is just way too specific and having a consultant that might have other ways of doing it normally. So that's where why today we've kind of been trying to ask, listen, where did you get this from? I've asked this question twice. Where did you get this process from? Was it another municipality? Was it a consultant that you're working with or talking to? Help me understand where it's coming from, and I got no answer with respect to it. So again, Sean's idea was maybe we approve it.
You're not supposed to lie.
Excuse me. And I'm not lying. I asked you twice. Would you like to see the emails?
I told you, I gave you the list of towns where I got it.
Liz, I'm asking specifically where the fourteen task process came from.
You didn't. You said, where did this come from? I gave you the list. So don't lie, please.
I'm not lying, Liz. I asked you where the fourteen step process. I don't know what's so funny right now. I really don't.
Which is you. You take take what I said and twist it. I gave you.
Liz, you said nothing in response to my specific questions. Got it, okay? That's all I can tell you. We're trying to work with you to approve this because this represents our community when we send out an RFP.
And I'm happy to take Bernadette's grammar and and some way it shouldn't changes to the list. Let me finish, please. If you compare my RFP to Bernadette's that has the work plan, which is very specific, isn't it?
Yeah, required by D required by DEC or.
Yeah. Yeah, is that going to scare consultants away? It's a very detailed.
They're used to those those specifics.
And so are they used to the specifics that we put in.
Rezoning by a municipal municipality by municipality is flexible and then is, you know, specified for the municipality. But I mean.
What makes us different than any other municipality going through rezoning? You want certain things. You want to know how many meetings. How many meetings that consultant is gonna be on site?
They're gonna tell us in their proposal.
Yes, but if you leave it wide open, one may say, oh, I'm gonna be here five times.
How many rezoning or renews of zoning laws have you done yourself?
Of zoning laws?
Yeah.
No, but I've done hundreds of.
How many questions? Sorry.
What? How many have you done?
Exactly. And what we are trying to buy by is when Carla saw it, she had the same reaction I did. And she said, but listen, since I'm not a legal or since I'm just legal, why don't we get a professional that does this who's not?
Well, who is this professional?
I don't know if you wanna. That's up to you.
Hi, it's Jim Martin, the LA group.
Okay. You don't want them to respond?
He's retiring next May. He doesn't want, he he didn't give us any information. He didn't get to present. Wasn't, they were not gonna submit.
Jim Martin, the LA group are well renowned, as you know.
Why?
We want him to submit ideally.
They don't want to submit.
They are not going to.
They don't have the time. They don't have to.
Yeah, okay.
To Sean's point, though, sorry.
Okay.
I think to Sean's point, though, is sometimes we get too too wrapped up in the weeds about it, and really we just need to have more general points made about it. So I guess I've been asking what the, you know, what, can you explain that to us a little bit? So, you know?
Well, my only point is typically when you put out an RFP, at least in the construction field, planning's a little different. You don't put a not to exceed. You don't give a value because, of course, that leaves the consultant to say, all right, well, I've got that much to spend, so I'm gonna have an estimate that.
You're perfect.
Yeah, so however, given the fact that the other way to do this would be to to give a value and then now your consultants compete, it's a value competition as opposed to a cost competition. So how much can they provide for that amount of money? And and that's really what, when you put a not to exceed, is what you're getting is how much bang for your buck are you gonna get?
A quick question on that line, if I can. Liz, did you put any points on the pricing or not when you did the the point system? Do you remember if you have that? I don't have it in front of me, so I can't see. So what's the what's the point value currently you're assigning to it? You get where I'm about to go with this probably? Well, yeah, I would I would say using the not to exceed, but then place a little more emphasis on pricing to make sure they understand if they are too high in pricing, they may not get their full points for that, too.
Yeah, fifteen points for proposed schedule and budget.
You have to talk into the mic. Fifteen fifteen out of a hundred?
Yeah. Basically, understanding the scope of work, twenty, past performance on similar projects, which I think is very important. Fifteen qualifications and experience of proposed staff, ten proposed schedule and budget, fifteen, understanding the village's goals and objectives, ten, and overall strategy and quality of proposal, twenty.
The only thing I would suggest to you is that understanding the village's goals, et cetera, is something they're gonna learn once they get here, not from just the brief narrative we've got on that. And so I don't know where that necessarily comes from. Maybe I would say take five of those points and give it to the budget column and then do what Sean's suggesting ultimately in going more wide open approach, blanks, not blank slate, but you gotta work with the ZAC, you gotta work with the public in terms of outreach. You gotta work with their committees, like playing board zoning.
Yeah, you still need a bulleted list of things that you require.
Right, just that specific.
But the thing is.
Also have to be specific about what your outcome, what the outcome.
A revised, improved zoning code and zoning map.
And I think it's perfectly reasonable to have some benchmarks along the way where you do say, you know, certain deliverables as you go.
That's what this does. It says, you get the draft, and then you take it back to the public, and then you get the final. That's what it does. It it.
Yeah.
And and the thing is, it also, excuse me, provides a sentence in here that if they wish to alter that and and deliver the same same thing, present it. So consultants are very used to the type of specificity that you saw in the BOA RFP. This, I have answered RFPs for for projects. Some are very specific. Actually, I I like that because then I know what they want.
But so I'm sorry, to to go in, I know you do have that line in there that they can make adjustments, but if you're being so specific, which you are currently, they might not be willing to present that to us because it they might feel that it might put the, please let me finish. Please don't disturb. I'm being pretty kind right now in this.
We we've been trying all weekend, Liz, to be kind and polite to tell you that there are issues with this. We've tried.
Accusing me of being a liar is nice and, right?
So what I was going to say, to finish my thought, was yes, you do have that line in there. Before you made your side comment, I was saying that it might, you know, they might not be willing to be so creative or flexible because they might think it might put them in a disadvantage not to do that exact, you know, outline of tasks that you had. So that that that's what I think some of us are suggesting, that like, give a little more flexibility, maybe allow them to to fill in those blanks a little bit. At least that's what I.
The situation that may occur is if, let's say, for instance, hypothetically, you did have a not to exceed number and you had a very specific scope. They're gonna say, okay, X number of hours for this task, that task, this. You may end up with something that far exceeds what your budget is.
Yeah.
Right, so if if they see very specific tasks and then they see, well, you can't exceed that, they say, well, we can't do that for this. And and then therein lies a problem because they won't even write up a proposal.
But I was like, what your idea was that I'm trying to work with you on here in that get that scoring system to maybe embrace the price a little bit more just so that they, when they see not to exceed, they understand, yeah, but your final number will matter to some degree. So don't assume eighty five thousand's the correct answer ultimately. Like, somebody may underbid you and have the same credentials and everything else. But then also let them have a little bit more creativity to say, this is what we're gonna do to this day and this day. And we set a full deadline for when the approval needs to happen and let them work in between the two to set what they would view as the correct benchmarks at that point. And if we don't like the benchmarks, we have two choices, not to pick them or to call them back and say, are you sure about this? Or to work with them at that point if we find nobody that meets our credentials ultimately. I I think Sean's got the correct overall thought here, and it's just a question of rejiggering this in a way that's less specific, still has.
So tell me, what is too specific? What in here?
Fourteen different tasks.
Yeah, that's what.
Well, the thing, what I would suggest is, you know, table this and put it on the next meeting agenda and give ourselves a couple of weeks for all of us to look at it, make suggestions, comments, and and come to a consensus.
Well, the thing is, it's gonna take a month after it gets released to get the answers back. So we're, that's why I wanted to get it done now and get it out there so that we by, as Carla had suggested, we get going on it and 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 start and have the zoning committee, you know, meet to to sort of organize themselves in September. And October, they're reviewing the responses along with us, thank goodness. And and then picking a consultant, and the consultant probably isn't gonna get chosen until somewhere in November before they actually start doing work.
I would like to have five or six consultants put in RFPs here or proposals after RFP here. And I don't think in Carla's reaction, you can say what you want about her being legal versus, you know, a non-legal situation, but she's watched these processes before. She had the same reaction. Nobody's gonna sign up for this possibly, Liz. So why are we going to waste time again where we may end up with nil? When we have resources, when we have resources at our disposal, she's volunteered even to send it out for a quick little look. And then we make the changes and get out something that we're all proud of here, and that's gonna get a success rate.
I'm perfectly happy to to listen to a consultant and see what what they say. But I don't really wanna wait, you know, another two weeks before we, you know, can get this out the door. Can 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 we agree that that's?
It's four four weeks versus six weeks right now is what you're saying.
Yeah, so we're not picking the ZAC until two weeks from now anyway. The ZAC probably doesn't meet for two weeks after that as they get themselves organized. I mean, they're they're in the same train of that timing at that point, so I don't see where the issue is.
Well, the reason there's fourteen is because.
I'm getting way too used to calling this thing a ZAC. I'm sorry.
No, the reason we have so many from the county board, you know, that it's done basically on task eight. And then you have the presentation to the board, the county planning review, final zoning. And then you have the presentation to the board, the county planning review, final zoning and subdivision law revisions. Seeker, public hearing.
I think we have consensus here, Liz, that we're going to hold off until next meeting.
What I, yeah, I'm, I'm fine continuing the conversation, but frankly, I think Liz did an excellent job. I think actually she wrote it, it's beautifully written, especially the description of the village. I had never seen it described that in those terms before, I thought that was excellent.
I give credit to the comp plan because I.
Did you take it from them?
Yeah, I looked at some of their, their language. It's a, it's a RFP for implementing the comprehensive plan. So I thought it was appropriate to put in their language.
That makes sense.
Just as an FYI, your population is not fifty-five hundred, it's five thousand ninety-five as of 2021. We, we feel that.
But also, just to finish my thought, that I think Liz provided an excellent framework from which to respond to and it provide feedback. So she has many steps. If you think there's too many steps, which one specifically would you take out? And how would you restructure that? Because it's true, she spells it out, but a lot of them are just the normal steps you do. It's just spelled out.
And I would like to hear from Jim Martin before continuing that part of the discussion because again, maybe he's going to agree fully with you, probably he's not, so we'll find out.
So are we then just tabling this?
It's no table because there's no motion.
Yeah, so that, and that's the bigger, yeah, that's the bigger issue.
You wouldn't table unless it was actually made in the first place, Liz.
She made, didn't she make a motion?
No.
You didn't make a motion?
No.
No.
I have, I have a couple of other items.
We have an executive session.
I know, I know. One is to ask where the village hall repairs stand.
Right, right now, I'm waiting on even getting somebody over, Joel and Arrow, namely, to look at the issue we have at Front Street where sandbags are and try to get Lobella to be able to handle what we're giving them right now, okay? So I'm going to work on it with them, but right now we are overflowing Lobella with the tasks in a way that I'm not getting response to this.
These are repairs that were.
I'm well aware.
By an engineer to, to be done within six months of his report.
Unfortunately, the engineers are now going to have to actually doctor up a process for bid, Liz.
I know, but I mean, I can't believe how long it's been before we do this. That wall looks like it's about to collapse.
Liz, you know, longer it takes to get a water line right now, let alone anything else?
What?
They're probably going to have to reassess the wall because it's been so long, too.
Probably.
So they're going to have to do a field visit.
Yep. So when Joe visits for Front Street, I actually was going to walk him over. And so.
Also, I, I have a request that each of us have our own microphones. The not, the incidence of COVID is up. I got two notices from my mother's nursing home this last week about staff with positive. I go visit her. I don't want to be giving someone COVID. And, you know, people here have, have been sick. And I think it's, it's time, you know, we don't share microphones.
No offense, Liz, yeah, I don't know if you know who paid for this, the sound system in the first place, to even make something like this happen in the first place. You're looking at them, I never charged back the village. So the village would like to spend money on a sound system of that.
Yeah, that's entirely appropriate. You should not be spending your own money.
Well.
The village should be spending.
Well, it was a risk on buying something that honestly, I want to see would work. And well, I, I think overall feedback is that it's a pretty decent system. The one nice thing about not everybody having a microphone is it generally keeps us from talking over each other when there's not a microphone.
I think we all need a microphone.
Yeah, I mean, this is a public health issue. Also, I just wanted, where we stand on the, the. Did you mention at a meeting that we have a contract on Woods Hollow from Milton?
I did, and as I said, and correct me if I'm wrong, Carla and Jim Craig are working on the next steps right now.
Yeah, we've been, our vacations were like concurrent, consecutive, so we haven't connected.
I, I have a request, can we see that first draft?
Make lots of changes?
I'd like to see it.
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing it.
His board has not seen it yet, so I wasn't giving, his board hasn't seen it, so I didn't think it fair for you to see it if his board hasn't yet. I'll talk to Jim and see if there's any issues with it. I don't care if you see it.
Oh, I'd like to see what, what's written, you know?
Well, I was going to give you the one after I had reviewed it instead of.
Okay.
So we're going to do legal, is that what you're trying to tell me?
I mean, if you're about to, to review it, then we'll see yours with your suggested changes, that's fine.
Yes.
I just, you know, you announced it last meeting and we haven't seen anything.
We've been.
Motion.
How close are we to sending the Studio A contract out?
You wanted to have final say on it and she sent it out and nobody's put comments out.
I didn't know you were waiting for us to.
You asked for the final approval.
I wanted to, to see it, but I didn't know you were like.
Yeah, no, I said, please advise of your comments.
Oh, okay, so you're waiting on it.
Yes. Can I get a motion to enter executive session to discuss a real estate contract and a personnel issue? Trustee Fundanza, trustee Hormos, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Both, both in carries. I will state to the public that it is expected that action will be taken when we exit executive session. That it will likely be taken.
I need to open my, uh.
There's somebody on?
I don't know who they are.
Um, well, it's supposed to be thirty, I got a kid there, but it's like an hour to you, so thirty, leave the house.
Hour to you, dog.
Yeah, press the, um. Part's out, this is worth, press that.
You just gotta be watching.
Right, I don't know who they are, who they are.
Uh, Caitlin Carmella, Chief Bush, you do cover. You need it out, there you are. Okay, let me find those motions for early, so I have this right. Uh, which is the last one, all right? You can either stop over there.
We're a little hungry over here.
Yeah, I.
I haven't had dinner in years.
Sorry, some of us go home and have dinner.
Okay, I'm gonna do it.
No, I didn't go home, I went to work.
Can I impose upon you with your graphic ability?
Not right now.
Okay, um, we are back in session from, uh, executive session, as promised, we will be taking action. Uh, there was no action taken in executive session, thank you very much for repeating me that line. Dress me up, you can't take me out, okay Carl? Can I get a motion approving the binding term sheet for purchase of seventy-eight Thompson Street in the Village Falls Spa and the adjoining parking lot parcel to the degree that it is a separate tax map parcel? I'll make the motion. And, and permitting the mayor to execute same. Okay, that was Ben, on the, uh, motion is Bernadette on the second. Discussion, I think we should owe it to the public just to explain that this is the community emergency court, uh, building. The intent is, at the very least, to be the new police department, uh, ultimately. Um, it is the first step in trying to figure out how to handle police in court. Uh, we're still discussing where to go next with the court aspect of it, but, uh, after walking through with the police, uh, with several members of the police force, this building is uniquely equipped as it is to house the police department. It will probably take some build-out money and we will look for a loan from USDA, but I will not be contingent on that loan. Uh, we'll seek financing in some way, shape, or form or another, the closing would not be until about February twenty-eighth of next year, and, or February twenty-ninth of the next year, I guess technically it's got, uh, that many days in it. Uh, but either way, uh, it will be at the end of, uh, February, uh, is the goal date. So, anything, anybody wants to add on that? Uh, let us do a roll call if I can ask for that, Madam Clark.
Is that like overtime? Trustee Baskin?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Fundanza?
Yes.
Trustee Cormos?
Yes.
Mayor Rossi?
Yes. Okay, uh, Chief Bush, since you're watching briefly, if you want, our next two motions are going to be concerning appointments of officers, if you want to, uh, deliver any, uh, messages concerning Officer Straight and Ackley, feel free to raise your hand and interject. Uh, I will go to the motion at this point, and I should have allowed, uh, ninety seconds for everybody watching, I apologize for not doing that the last one. Uh, so we will do that coming up here, uh, for the, uh, public discussion period. Uh, can I get a motion to appoint Scott Straight as a new full-time officer effective on September first, twenty-twenty-three, or when his paperwork, training, and/or availability to be a full-time officer is completed, whichever is later? Trustee Fundanza?
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion. Chief Bush, you want to add anything? You got to raise your hand, let us know. There might be Mary, actually. Okay, we'll assume no, uh, let me just say that, uh, Scott Straight is a very quality officer. Uh, as Tim Hagej had left, uh, we were searching for a new full-time officer. Uh, we had two part-timers that were very interested in it, I'll touch on number two, uh, coming up in a second, but, uh, Scott is somebody that is well-respected by his peers, and we are excited to have him come on as a full-time police officer in Village Falls Spa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Can I get a motion appointing Ed Ackley to be a new full-time officer effective on January first, twenty-twenty-four, paid at the lowest full-time pay rate until the retirement of Officer Todd Ives? Trustee Fundanza?
Second.
Trustee Cormos, discussion. So what's happened here is Ed Ackley was basically neck and neck in terms of when the two part-timers stepped up. Uh, we realized that Officer Ives is near retirement and we wanted to ensure inconsistency in our full-time police force. This means that we'll add temporarily a fifth full-time officer, it is not our current intent to stay at five, but what it will allow us to do is have Todd Ives, who's our longest tenured officer, gives some institutional knowledge to both full-timers, new, uh, guys, and I think it'll help the transition process ultimately. Uh, the budgetary effect is minimal, if any ultimately, because our belief is that by doing these two moves, at least for the six months of overlap with Officer Ives and Officer Ackley, that overtime will reduce offsetting any increase in pay for them. We will track that, uh, as Ben's been asking, uh, us to do. Anybody want to add anything to that? Again, this will be effective January first, twenty-twenty-four, uh, but we wanted to, uh, make sure the Officer Ackley knew that we are thrilled to have him as well, we were just trying to do things correctly for our budget purposes, but at the same time for the police force, and I think this is the right give and take on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Can I get a motion to adjourn and audit the vouchers at eleven oh eight PM? Trustee Fundanza?
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we'll see everybody on September twelfth, that's a Tuesday at seven PM, thank you.